Good afternoon, Atlanta to the black world. Welcome to the National Town Hall Meeting, sponsored by the National African American Reparations Commission called NARC. Y'all here? Y'all here? Y'all give me, make some noise out there. Alright. My name is Dr. Ron Daniels. I'm president of the Institute of the Black World 21st Century. And I'm the convenor of the National African American Reparations Commission. And I am so excited to be here in Atlanta on the celebration of Juneteenth. Because we're gonna talk about some reparations on Juneteenth. And that's, that's our discussion for this afternoon. We want to talk about the state of the reparations movement. There's some people who never, ever believed that we were going to be to the point that we'd have reparations being developed by the city of Atlanta, Decatur, all over the place. They didn't believe it. But it's happening all over the country and all over the world. And one of the places that's leading the charge is Evanston, Illinois. And by the way, we have the architect of Evanston, Illinois, right here. And the person of Robin Rue Simmons, you're gonna be hearing her and other panelists as we proceed. But we're gonna start with a film called "The Big Payback", which is, was filmed over a couple of years by Erika Alexander from Living Single. And she's a great artist and actor who devoted her time to going over, producing this film. But before we do that, I just want to, as a matter of personal privilege, the owners of this great establishment, isn't this a beautiful place? Isn't this beautiful? And the other thing is, we deliberately chose being here at the new black Wall Street. I mean, it is beautiful. And we brought people all the way from Tulsa, Oklahoma, from the original black Wall Street to interface and connect. But my dear friend, Nibadi is the person who has been guiding things. I've known this brother for many, many years. This is his, this establishment, but it's his along with Richard Jordan. They work here, they help produce here to keep this place alive. And we want the whole world out there to know about the new black Wall Street, Atlanta and beyond. I also want to give a big shout out to Derrick Bozeman, WAOK. Alright, and W, Radio Free Georgia, for helping to promote this event. So let's give it a shout out for, let's give Nibadi a big round of applause. So the way this is gonna roll, we're gonna watch this remarkable film. It has a great beginning, by the way. Y'all be sure to watch that beginning. It starts off really, really nice, right? We're gonna watch the film. And then when we watch the film, we're gonna take a little quick breather. We're gonna reset the stage. We have an incredible panel. And we're gonna talk about, again, reparations, not only locally, but on, at the state level, nationally and across the world. And then we're gonna engage you, opportunity for you to offer some comments and questions and all that good stuff here on Juneteenth. So this is a great day to be talking about reparations. So now, without further ado, let's look at the film. "The Big Payback" by Erika Alexander. It's on.
We need to get the single file line where no one gets in.
The House Committee on the Judiciary is holding a hearing today on a bill with proposes to establish a commission to study and develop reparations proposals for African Americans.
HR 40, the bill introduced by the late Congressman John Conyers, has languished in committee for more than 30 years. Since his passing, Texas Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee has taken up the fight to try to move it through the House individually to the Senate, where she'll need a miracle to get it passed.
HR 40 is, in fact, the response of the United States of America long overdue. Black people in America are the descendants of Africans kidnapped and transported to the United States. It is only this group that can singularly, singularly claim to have been slaves under the auspices, the institution and leadership of the United States government. Slavery is the original sin. Slavery has never received an apology.
By the time the enslaved were emancipated, they comprised the largest single asset in America. $3 billion and $1860, more than all the other assets in the country combined.
I picked the cotton. I built the railroad under someone else's whip for nothing. For nothing.
Reconstruction failed after 12 years. And after Reconstruction, a reign of terror that had never been seen. The hanging fruit, the lynching.
State-sponsored terrorism.
We kicked the living hell out of the niggers back to their own hometowns where they ought to be.
Yesterday, when asked about reparations, Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell offered a familiar reply.
Yeah, I don't think reparations for something that happened 150 years ago for whom none of us currently living are responsible is a good idea.
This rebuttal proffers a strange theory of governance, that American accounts are somehow bound by the lifetime of its generations.
What the bill says is that this is a proposal for reparations for the institution of slavery. The institution of slavery has never gone away.
Convict leasing, oppression of voting, poll taxes and racist GI bills.
Many of the bedrock policies, in fact, that ushered generations of Americans into the middle class were designed to exclude African Americans.
We fought in every one of your damn lousy wars, baby, and you give us nothing.
Thousands and thousands of black veterans were denied their general benefits.
Federal housing programs also discriminated against African Americans by redlining.
There's no question the redlining is happening. It's happening in almost every major city in America.
Typical black family in this country has one-tenth the wealth of the typical white family.
31% of black children live in poverty compared to 11% of white children. We know the criminal justice system.
Somebody kick in the door inside my girlfriend.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question facing every person who lives in this nation. Not so much who killed those young men, but what killed them.
I'm gonna tell them there are African-American men that are in my life.
The matter of reparations is one of making amends, indirect redress, but it is also a question of citizenship.
If you won't listen to me when I make an appeal for the Negroes, because you have no concern for the Negroes. Listen to me when I make an appeal for America.
Let us work together. Let's get this done. It is long overdue, it is deserving, and it is the right thing to do. Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Get to hear when the bill will have a full House vote. Keep in mind, that's still another hurdle that this legislation has to move past.
Good afternoon. This is the professor, Dr. Ron Daniels, president of the Institute of the Black World 21st Century and distinguished lecturer. Good afternoon, you're on Vanish Point.
Hey, how you doing, brother?
Good.
I just wanted to get your opinion on HR 40. There hasn't been much talk or thought about, you know, reparations. So I was just wondering if you could speak on that.
Well, I certainly can. I mean, HR 40 is, uh, we're pushing very hard. There's been a lot of debate and discussion about the, the bill. And it's unfortunately, unfortunately, it's playing out between the political parties to some degree. I must say that we have great disappointment at this level. But Sheila Jackson Lee has been absolutely visionary, courageous and tenacious in helping to spearhead this. African Americans are still feeling the brunt of slavery. But we're trying to get our friends who are making statements, "You were not a slave," to understand that you are a descendant, a descendant, a descendant, but you are faced by that status of slavery and racism that puts you in this position today. We did not initially start talking about building local reparations initiatives until I get this call from a dear friend, longtime activist.
I'm fantastic. How are you?
I'm doing great. I'm doing great. Good.
You know, I'm like a warrior.
He said, man, you know, we got a bad sister in Evanston, and she's pushing reparations question strong. Good evening, everyone. We're going to prepare our hearts and minds to begin this most historic town meeting to celebrate the Evanston reparations. Would you clap your hands for our senator, Ms.? There's something in the air. The whole nation is watching this city. And indeed, perhaps over the world. And so it was Alderman Simmons who brings us here in many respects. You have become the visible face and the driving force of the Evanston Reparation Initiative. Why did you do this?
Evanston. We are leaders. And as I worked through my responsibilities as 5th Ward Alderman, I saw how hard we were working. My colleagues on City Council, community organizations, residents, parents, were working really hard to bring equity and inclusion. And we were not moving the needle. We still maintained a wealth disparity of $46,000 between blacks and whites in Evanston. We continued a life expectancy gap of 13 years. Our black homeownership rate is at its lowest point since the 1960s. And we needed to move our efforts beyond apology and ceremony. And we needed to bring action. It was time to do something as radical as the oppression and discrimination, as the impact from the Jim Crow law and the redlining, something as radical as reparations. There was nothing more to do.
Alright, folks, we'll be talking about HR 40, the Commission to Study Reparations. HR 40 has been stalled in Congress for more than 30 years. But there's new light in the debate coming out of Evanston, Illinois. Robin Rue Simmons was an alderwoman there. She got passed the first reparations bill in American history.
The city of Evanston now has pledged to pay out $10 million over the next 10 years, all funding using tax revenue from recreational marijuana.
This is the first attempt at a publicly funded reparations program in U.S. history.
So now it's up to Evanston to decide how and to whom the money will be distributed.
It's been nonstop more calls and emails than the last few days than I probably had in the last couple of years, really.
You'll be hearing from me shortly on the few emails and texts. And then I'll see you at 5:30.
Okay, thank you.
So, no problem.
Learning that local government is most responsive and we're more nimble and we can make impact quicker than federal government and thinking this is a local matter. And I pushed it relentlessly. I was very, um, very stern in wanting it to happen in this calendar year, being the 400th year of black resilience. That was important to me. So I was not willing to compromise on any other format to get to this victory. Time is of the essence. So with that said, let's just do the work at this point. Solutions only, hashtags.
How are we gonna, I hear we have 16 seats instead of 24? Hi, how are you?
Gila, go ahead, sit here.
Thank you for accepting invitations.
Gila, sit here. Alright. Does everybody have a seat? I will not hold anybody liable for any injuries that might occur in this. Welcome, everyone. I have your attention. I'll try and paint a picture of how Evanston has changed over the course of 100, 150 years. Evanston was established in 1855. Right here was the Evanston Sanitarium, Evanston Segregated Hospital. Up and down here, a lot of mom and pop shops, eateries, barbers, beauticians. This location here was the original location of Ebenezer AME Church, Evanston's oldest black church established in 1882. And the Emerson Street branch YMCA that was located at this section right here, it was open in 1914 to service the black community in Evanston, Illinois.
Everything that happened in Evanston was happening in this building. Churches started there, clubs started there. Decades of history and memory in one building. And that kind of epitomized the strength of a community at that time. Shorefront is an organization that documents the African-American experience in Chicago suburban North Shore. Usually the storyline is, we're domestics and servants and we have no history. And I'm kind of like saying this, this is BS. This is American history. And you cannot edit out a dialogue to create a new narrative. You're not telling a complete story, you're telling an inaccurate story.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here. Um, we are here today because we have a lot of work to do. We've done something really historic and we have an opportunity to actually make tremendous impact in our community and be looked to as a model of what's possible in localities across the nation. Via Evanston's budget, there is a reparation fund line item. That's really exciting.
The question is, what makes reparations reparations? Certainly, the whole issue of enslavement is what people tend to think about. But it is also for Jim Crow policies and racially exclusionary policies. Policies that provided benefits for white people that we didn't get. That in fact helped to develop white communities to the underdevelopment of black communities.
I want us to forever remember that there is no amount of money that they can pay us for what our people have endured. The notion that comes out of our committee ancestral wisdom about justice, not charity, and that's the distinction we're looking for in terms of public policy and what we're talking about when we talk about reparatory justice.
When you use the term reparations in this context, a whole slew of categories, redlining, apartheid, which was Jim Crow segregation, slavery, these were what were considered crimes against humanity. And how do you return the dignity back to a people whose dignity was eroded as a result of the crimes that were committed? When we come to 1865, General Sherman's Field Order 15, that was the moment when the nation attempted to redress the crimes of enslavement and all the things that went on through that cruel period.
Often be offended. As the Union swept towards victory over the slaveholding southern states, General William T. Sherman issued a military order redistributing 400,000 acres of Confederate lands to the recently emancipated slaves. The orders specified that the land be divided equally into 40 acre parcels and governed by an autonomous all-black government. This order, Special Order Field 15, became known as 40 Acres and a Mule.
General Sherman's Field Order 15, that was the first of many times where this country had an opportunity to do the right thing and it never did. If they had, then we wouldn't be in the situation we're in now. Less than three months after General Sherman's order, Lincoln was assassinated and the new president rescinded it. That kind of ended reparations for 50, 60 years. That's when Sister Cali House comes in and adds. A lot of ex-slaves were too old to work. She had set up a massive movement trying to give government pensions for ex-slaves. She was stopped by being arrested and imprisoned because the government said she was actually defrauding her members, that she should have known America was never gonna pay. Cali House was a threat to white America and to the government because she inspired a movement. Do you see this issue as a collective struggle of a people? But the question is, do you see yourself as part of the people of African descent? Or do you see yourself as an American individual who happens to be black?
This is the redline map that shows the area that was redlined, all encompassing the 5th Ward. Redlining was a federal housing program designating areas in cities that had a potential real estate growth and assigning value to areas. So if you're in the higher letters, A, B, green areas are the most desirable areas. Those are areas where banks specifically would lend money for housing and for development. This whole blue area here is all lakefront property, so highly desired. Then when you get in yellow, it's kind of iffy, you know? But a lot of times this represents like middle-class, working-class, ethnic white. If you're labeled D, that's the lowest. Banks recommend no investment whatsoever, not in housing, not in business development. 100% of the time, it is the black population. So Robin lives about right here, right in the middle where the D2 is.
Okay, well, my Uber is here. Aw, daughter. I'll see you Monday.
Okay, bye, baby. Have fun.
Bye-bye. You got the door?
Yeah.
Hey, Demetrius, how are you as Robin? I'm just touching base after that call we had yesterday. Did I have any action items?
My feelings are all over the place right now. Some mornings I wake up and I feel like, wow, I'm a part of history. This is special. And then it's intimidating at the same time because what if you don't get it right and everyone's not comfortable with it? You know, people have been extremely nasty to me and I'm careful to maintain my professionalism always and, you know, use all my big words and, um, not yell. And I just really want to get to the action. Like, that's kind of how I lead. I like to identify the problem, you know, and get right to identifying a solution and put some action behind that. But we can't work so swiftly with this because there are, you know, generations and decades and layers of problems and damages in responsible institutions and practices and culture. And the more I learn and the more I get accomplished, it seems like the more work there is to do.
Trying to find my husband, who doesn't often get to come here. And one of my swearing in. Being the President Clinton, we had an Oval Office picture. That's a big deal when you have a one-on-one meeting with the President of the United States. I appreciate that. We're talking about some serious issues. There's Mandela, Barbara. There's my good friend Congressman John Conyers fighting the good fight of HR 40 reparations. This was deeply personal because I have lived the laws of the land dividing us by sanctioning discrimination and racism. John Lewis is, I'd have to get way up here. John Lewis is a wonderful man and he was a strong supporter of HR 40. I just miss him so much. My grandparents were in Florida. When I would go visit them, I rode in the back of the train um, as a little girl with my bag of food because I could not eat anyplace in that train. I had to be relegated to the train for colored people and you had to bring your own food. And my mom and dad. My father was a young, brilliant cartoonist. This is the Invisible Men, the trailblazing black artist of comic books. Um, Edra Clyde Jackson, there he is. He did it under a pseudonym because there was a broker who took the work that these black men had and then took it to Madison Avenue. Because of the color thing, it had to be sort of camouflaged. Oh, there, I turned the page. This is kind of work that he did. And this is what they did. They took their work and then they put a pseudonym on it and sold it to the comic books. So they wouldn't know that black people, black men, did it. And then when the white soldiers came back, World War II, it wasn't just, we don't need you anymore. That stained us for his whole life into my, beginning of my life. I'm still not prepared to join an insurrection. I just want to understand and I want you to understand who I am and who we are.
I didn't know if what you wanted was relative to the agenda. I knew, so I was trying to make an effort to touch base with you before. Six generations of my family have been 5th Ward residents. The work is personal for me. I have a daughter and I have, you know, a son and a grandson. They're black children that are in a cruel world with discrimination and unfair practices that they have to navigate life with. And if I can do anything to give them hope that they can be whatever they want to be, that's my responsibility. So I grew up right here in the 5th Ward. I was born and raised. And, um, from birth to 17, when I left after graduating Evanston Township High School, um, I lived in, I should count them. It may be somewhere between 10 and 12 different homes in the, in the 5th Ward. So this is, this is my neighborhood. Much of my childhood, I actually lived with my grandparents. So my mother was, um, pursuing her highest and best life and I lived with my grandparents. So this was my grandparents' home. And, um, so we lived on the first floor. This was my home base. I probably lived here, um, some stretch of grade school, most of junior high, all of high school, I lived with my grandparents here in this house. This is me in front of that house. We didn't have a lot, but we had a ton of love. And I didn't know that I didn't have a lot. I mean, it wasn't until I moved out and entered into adulting that I realized that we were, you know, working-class poor. I thought I was well off. It's my village. Like, these streets raised me and that community I'm just forever grateful for. I could have very easily been something else. I could have very easily had an addiction or, you know, been in the criminal justice system. And, um, my community really helped me believe that I could choose to be however great I wanted to be. And I believe them. And, um, here I am today trying really, really hard to give back in the way that I was receiving as a child.
We are here in hecky way. How ya, how you doing? Sauce on the regular chips? We specialize in barbecue. It's a homemade recipe received from my mother. She got it from her grandmother. This is our smokers here. Those are rib tips. And Kendrick's over here working pulled pork, or she pretending like she's working the pulled pork. We sell so much, I had to get a machine. People don't have the work ethic, that's what we're trying to teach, like they used to. I'm not liberal. I'm not liberal, okay? I'm like in the middle. I helped Robin on her campaign to be an alderperson. You know, I counsel, and this community's got a little too liberal for me. I mean, reparation, we don't need it. When we talk about redlining, that wasn't good. But then there was part of it that was good. All the black people live together. We all was in the same neighborhood. The poor, the middle class, and the rich. My family's been here since 1902. My great-grandfather, now he was born into slavery. His mother and three of the siblings escaped from New Madrid, Missouri, where they were picking cotton. And my dad, who raised nine kids doing domestic work on the North Shore. You know, the man worked extremely hard and he saved his money and he built a house. This is back during the time when they were not even given or considering giving black men money for homes. You know, we never was on any type of public aid or assistance or any of those things. He didn't believe in it and he wouldn't take it anyway. He believed and taught us the work ethic and that all of us, you should work for what you want. This wall here is some key people that played a great role in the community. This guy here, he owned this company, Golden Found Juices. He couldn't get into the big stores, but he's smart. He hired these two white guys to be his salesmen and they thought they were the owners. So that's how he got into those stores. They knew how to think. This guy is named Jack Moss. He owned the grocery store that was down the street. That's where every black people shopped at, was at his place. No hand-me-outs, no government funds. And you know something, if you didn't have enough money, he had a little charge for you. You pay him off weekly. And that's my dad up there. I put him close to heaven.
I've lived in Evanston for 19 years. I thought I lived in a diverse community. My kids went to diverse school. But all my friends were white. I lived in a totally white neighborhood. And I knew absolutely nothing about the black community or the history of the black community. And I think once you know that and once you hear the stories, you can't help but care. You can't help but recognize the injustice, the enormous length of time that this injustice has been going on. And so that's why I give a shit, because they're people in my community. It's my community. Dear Evanston. And so I started Dear Evanston. It's an organization based on a Facebook page, talking to white people about what's going on in Evanston's black community because there's such a divide in our city. And there's so many white people who are probably pretty well-meaning, but just don't know what's going on, just don't know the history of Evanston. And not because they don't want to know, but no one's ever taught them. And I was one of those people. I grew up in South Africa and I left South Africa when I was almost 15. And I think that growing up in South Africa and being young and growing up during apartheid, there was nothing I could do. There was nothing that I felt any power to do. And I remember as a kid feeling very guilty and uncomfortable and helpless. I live in this beautiful house. And the question is, how much do we owe and how much should we give? I think every white person in Evanston is gonna need to answer that question for themselves. I can't even say for myself what it is that I'm prepared or that my family is prepared to give. Because it's just like an insurmountable amount that is owed. I don't know how we'll ever pay it. I don't know how, as a family, we'd be able to pay it and how much we'll be willing to, to be very honest, you know? How much of our privilege and our money are we gonna be willing to ultimately give to this? Something I have to think about a lot.
This is the rough part of Evanston. This is the part of town where you don't want to be out on a nice summer night at 11 o'clock at night. Kind of a classic story. We always drove our kids to school. I would just drive them and then go to work. So we're driving by the high school with police line all over the place. Someone got shot at the high school. I don't know who did it. It's just the nature of this neighborhood or, you know, it's a rough part of town, just the way it is. If you were to look at some of these mailboxes, you'll see that there are lots of people, probably seven, eight names just listed on the mailbox. It's not right or wrong. It's just, you know, this is how they get through life's journey as well. Just... That's their world. Come on, Wolf, come on. Robin, as to why reparations are needed, she's mentioned that, you know, people are being priced out of Evanston. And, you know, thank God for the U.S. Census. I mean, in 1990, Evanston was 78% white. It's now 59% white. It's okay. In 1990, it was 22% black. It's now 16% black. Again, I have a problem with that. That's just people come and go and people move. In the meantime, Evanston has gone from 15% Asian to 27% Asian. So I just don't see this issue that, you know, that part of the reparations fund is going to be used to keep blacks' families in the community. I don't know why they would be given more status than any other group of people. There's a lot of people who are afraid to speak up. You're afraid and speak to a contrary position. You're actually afraid to actually speak your mind because someone's gonna sit there and say, you are a whatever. And/or your car is going to get keyed or your, you know, again, I don't know that there's any incidences of someone who said something that didn't agree with the masses, getting their car keyed. But that's the inner feeling, that saying something controversial is gonna end up, you know, causing harm to myself and my family. I mean, if you think about reparations, reparations, conceptually, it's for those that were victimized by slavery. So if there was gonna be a time to make the reparations for the harm of slavery, I would argue that that should have been done, you know, in the late 19th century. We're now in the 21st century. I think what it'll end up doing is making us look like a bunch of bloody fools.
All it makes somebody black or somebody white. What we're talking about is just skin color. In my family, it's all mixed. You want a bag? You sure? All right, thanks, man. I did a DNA on myself. I'm all mixed up. This is just a human body. My spirit, I love. That has no color. We all in this country are nothing but a bunch of mutt. We all are mutts. So I came out with a package called the mutt. These hot links, open up. This here, chicken wings. See, this here is the black people. This is, the red is the Indians, okay? And then you take and you put your white bread on top. Okay? And there it is. That's the mutt. Very special. I mean, that council's really liberal, nice people. But they're liberal and they're scared to be called racist and they're gonna let it go through. But will anything get done? That's what we got to see. We're gonna see where this goes. You're looking at a new flavor that we're coming out with and it's called the Reparation Root Beer. Well, that's my good friend Carl. He's kneeling down. That's me right there. He's giving me a $2 bill. Because pot tax just isn't enough. Reparation root beer. I mean, you're talking about, what, a million dollars a year? What's that gonna do? You know, a lot of black people think they're gonna get money. Well, how you gonna split a million dollars among, you know, the population here? You know, what is it now, 17% black? I mean, and how do you determine, you know, who's supposed to get it? I don't think it's gonna go too far or anywhere.
We, the leaders of the effort for reparations now. Reparations not in the next century, not in 2185, not 10 years from now. But reparations when? Reparations when? Reparations when?
The reparations movement during the 20th century took many forms and faced many obstacles. Early in the century, there was Marcus Garvey with his reparations repatriation movement. He was followed by Queen Mother Moore, who in 1957 gathered over a million signatures on a petition for reparations, which she presented to the United Nations. And in the 1960s and 70s, the Black Panthers had a 10-point program for liberation, which included a demand for payment of the reparations promise in Special Field Order Number 15. But when we think about the modern reparations movement, it was really Congressman John Conyers who got the ball rolling on the government reparations policy. Spurred on by reparations Ray Jenkins, Conyers crafted the first version of H.R. 40 in 1989 and unsuccessfully petitioned the House Judiciary Committee to take the bill up for the next 30 years. The work is now being carried forward by Representative Sheila Jackson Lee in Washington.
You're here to...
I'm here to meet with the Congresswoman, yes.
Okay. Sign in.
Uh huh, just go ahead. She should be here momentarily, so.
Okay.
Councilwoman?
We're so excited to see you.
Very happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on over here. Thank you. I'm delighted to welcome you and to congratulate you. We were so excited when we saw the legislation. In fact, we have used it in presentations that we've made. I use your outstanding construct. You've been, Councilmember, a real hero, shero to me.
Thank you, thank you. Being a member of National League of Cities, you know, we learned that government starts locally. And the thought was, why not do what we can do here at a local level while H.R. 40 is working through its process, through your leadership? We could have layers of repair and layers of remedy because, as we know, those damages, yes, were rooted in slavery, but, you know, it looked like discrimination even still today because of the color of our dark skin. So excited to share anything that we've done in Evanston and then learn more about your goals for H.R. 40 and how we can even support that and make sure that it gets passed.
Well, I think the good news is that you are proactive. So I am very grateful for that laboratory that you've given us. And I think it'll be very effective being utilized and shared with members of Congress. And what you have done just adds to the really important story of what reparations can be. So thank you. Glad you're here for the National League of Cities and glad we were able to have this moment.
Thank you. I know. I wish this wasn't happening because my first thing was to get a big hug.
Same here.
Next time.
Yeah.
Okay. I need a moment.
Hello.
Cam, Leon Andrews with the National League of Cities.
Hey, how are you?
Hi, lovely woman, Mayor of City Rochester.
Very nice to meet you.
Hi, how are you?
Hey, how are you?
When we learned about the work that Alderman, Robin Rue Simmons, was doing in Evanston, we brought that example to the Real Council at City Summit in San Antonio last November. There was a huge response by the council wanting to find out what other local examples are out there or other ways for local mayors and city leaders to lead in this space.
That's why we're here, right? That's why reparations, because this story is the same in all of our cities. And my belief is that we all do some local reparation in our cities in addition to what should happen with H.R. 40 as well. And we just received the recreational cannabis legislation in Illinois. 71% of our marijuana arrests were black Evanston residents and we're declining 16%. So there was a easy defense on, you know, discrimination and arrest.
As national organizations, we should connect and figure out how we leverage, build some collective momentum with more cities that kind of, where Evanston is not by itself in that sense, right?
Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. See you later.
I come here prepared to work. I don't rest much. I look at the beauty and I think how amazing my foremothers and forefathers were to come here and have such a role. Although it was certainly not appropriate circumstances, but it's time that we acknowledge it differently with repair. It's time.
China has identified the cause of the mysterious pneumonia outbreak in Wuhan City.
In the past two weeks, the number of cases of COVID-19 outside China has increased 13-fold.
The great shutdown of 2020 is underway. We know the hospital surge is coming.
I am officially declaring a national emergency. Two very big words.
It is lights out for tens of thousands of bars and restaurants across the city and even more across the state.
To avoid the loss of potentially tens of thousands of lives, we must enact an immediate stay-at-home order for the state of Illinois. So that is the action that I am announcing today.
We were in DC and as we were in DC, the coronavirus pandemic was becoming a concern. We were turned home to pretty much full-blown pandemic. Due to COVID, we have a legit budget concern. The recommendation was that we consider postponing reparation work until 2021. Why in the world would we postpone a reparation for a community that was also disproportionately impacted by the COVID virus? So we're moving forward with our deadlines as of right now. Good evening and thank you all for joining us for our second Town Hall for Reparations in Evanston. I'm very excited to introduce our next guest. We have Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee here with us tonight. And we are behind her, I am, I'll speak for myself, as you lead our nation towards having H.R. 40 pass.
Alderman Simmons, I am delighted to be here. And I was very privileged to work with the Honorable John Conyers, late John Conyers, on many issues, including criminal justice reform and, of course, H.R. 40. The time is now for our nation to study and acknowledge the effects and impact of slavery in America. The time is now to shed light on our shared truth, to enable healing through a national reckoning and to embrace and uplift our shared humanity. And what you have done in Evanston is a step forward for people to see the value that will come out of recognizing the idea of reparations. So in H.R. 40, we have 126 cosponsors. We've never had that many cosponsors in the decades that it's been found, 14 members away from 150. And I have no doubt that we're gonna work to pass this legislation out of the United States House and the Senate. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. And we have to close out this meeting, so thank you.
Can I say something?
Please, please.
I think most people know by now, but Hecq Powell is very ill and we should all pray for him tonight. He is in intensive care with COVID. Thank you.
Thank you for making that point. Thank you for making that point.
Data collected by state and local agencies suggests blacks are being disproportionately impacted by COVID-19.
Black people in the US are nearly three times as likely to become infected with the virus as their white neighbors and nearly twice as likely to die from it.
So you are talking about 400 years of racism as a national model in this country? And we are surprised at why black people are the most vulnerable to any public health issue?
Hakee is somebody who was the first that I talked to about running for Alderman. His passing was a great loss for everybody in the community. I think everybody felt like they had a special relationship with Hakee. I know that I did.
The greatest hurdle is the political will to make it happen. And Alderman Simmons made it happen. Before I took the job, I knew that Evanston was working on a reparations program and I wanted the opportunity to work with the committee. My background as an attorney is primarily litigation. The number one question that I get asked as the legal counsel is, how do you deal with it being a race-based program? How do you get over that hurdle? With respect to reparations or any sort of equity work in this country, ironically, you battle the 14th Amendment. The 14th Amendment guarantees equal protection under the laws of all citizens in the United States. Although the amendment was passed to try and benefit freed slaves and African-Americans in the country, it's actually been used to deny opportunities to those same groups. If someone sues, say, this isn't right. This is reverse discrimination. One of my favorite terms. This is reverse discrimination. And ironically, discrimination is one of the hardest things to prove. You can always say, the area of housing, this person was denied because of their income. They were denied because of their credit. They were denied because of a laundry list of things that had nothing to do with their race. But we didn't have the resources internally to find that evidence. And Dino Robinson was instrumental in gathering a lot of evidence, specifically implicating actions of the city with respect to discrimination.
You know, what we were trying to anticipate is, what if somebody comes and says, well, this wasn't a law in the law books in the city of Evanston, so how can you say it happened? Well, since we did not have any written laws, we had to look for the underlying evidence in, you know, procedures and thought processes and maybe just way the city of Evanston conducted themselves with the black community. So we found this recently. Negroes unable to secure homes here. This came out January 2, 1918. Nearly 50 colored families living in cramped homes of friends and relatives are unable to rent any other hundreds of empty houses. And it goes on to say, like landlords will not rent to Negroes. And how can landowners and realtors selling homes to Negroes, how can we prevent that from happening? And can we move the black community to unincorporated Niles? So that is played out over and over. We know it happens, but to find documentation of some sort, you know, is eye-opener. Yes, beautiful Evanston, has its roots in Jim Crow.
There's a reason why a lot of the blacks are not here anymore. I think my mom's the last original owner on this block.
That's what I've been told. I don't know for sure.
This is a first-step initiative to try to recompensate for the losses that we've taken over the years.
It would help for now.
Well, I think that it's more like repairing the dignity. You know, people looking at you based on the color of your skin and being discriminated against just solely because of how you look. You know, it really can have a traumatic effect on you overall. And looking back at what my dad had to go through back in the South during Jim Crow, and you could literally be beat and killed for standing up for yourself. So it took me a long time to understand that my dad was protecting me by shuffling his feet and skinning and grinning in front of the white man. And it took me at least 30 years to understand why he did that. So, yeah, I think that these type of programs restore dignity and faith that, you know, this system is changing and working in a way towards bringing a better equality and bringing different races together in more understanding.
Good afternoon. You're on air.
I got friends and family talking about they gonna give us reparations now. Come on. I bet you a million dollars they give us Juneteenth before they give us reparations.
Surprise!
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Carlos. Happy birthday to you and many more.
You heard tell me why these fine young ladies down here.
Bless the hands of the spirit and bless the people who will receive it. These and all of the blessings continue for our health and our wealth. And thank you for fellowship and friendship. Amen, amen, amen.
Amen.
Good bread, good meat, good Lord bless you.
Tell us a story about your parents' house that they were... They actually, what, they moved the street?
Yeah, they tore the street off the map. It's no longer on the map. They were building those very expensive homes up and down Central Park. For some reason or another, they didn't want... They couldn't get the value over their homes that black people were living near them. So the developers moved all the blacks out.
Same, what's happening right now.
Right. And I think that's one reason why my grandfather turned to alcohol, because he could not hold his head up in front of his own family. You cannot pay my grandfather back. He's dead. But we descendants, we survived without any assistance from the city of Evanston. No banks, nothing. Now, give us what we're due.
We need a cash payment. Alderman Rue Simmons said that that's what she was gonna give us from the beginning.
She knows. She knows from firsthand what happened. And yet, still, she does nothing about it.
So we have a reparations bill, and I thank her for that, okay? But we are ready now to go to the next step. We're all in this same boat together. But every time we grab an oar, you wanna roll against us. Let's roll together in this community. Let's build this country as it was intended to be, the city on the hill that is a light for the entire world.
For the purpose of moving this meeting forward, do we have consensus on $25,000 for purchase of a new home as the number up to?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
Okay, so with that said, I'm making a motion that we extend the program budget for housing to $400,000 for a total program budget. Alderman Braithwaite? Okay, so with that said, staff, we want to move forward with a program budget of 400K for purchase benefit up to $25,000.
I vote yes.
Okay, and with that, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
John, are you ready to go next?
I'm always ready. $400,000, not a lot, but, okay, $400,000 is not gonna go too far. But all the conversations that I've been hearing, it's not indicative of reparations. It's indicative of programs that were already previously in place in other places. Because you're gonna do reparations, you do reparations. If you're gonna give people money for reparations, you give them money to repair the damage that's done. You don't give them money and then demand and tell them what they can do with it. Call a spade a spade, and don't let them twist it into something that is other than what is represented to be, because then the backlash is gonna be on you later on.
Thank you all for coming. And with that said, Alderman Rainey, if you don't have any final comment, you could move adjournment?
I move adjournment.
I second. Thank you all.
Bye.
I'm good. Are you dressed and ready to go to graduation? Do you have a graduation outfit on, though? It's a special day. Bing bing. It's always tough to end with a, you know, this isn't reparations because it is. Any direct benefit to address the damages to a targeted community is repair. And that's what it is on a local level. But I also feel the frustrations of a resident that says, this isn't reparations. It's not enough. You know, I appreciate your effort. I respect and understand their frustrations. And for me, that's frustrating because I want to do more. Are you ready? Perfect. Yay, Bailey. All right, get it on. Turn it on. I'll tell you right now, I'm just excited. My daughter's graduating from Northwestern. She's going to Yale. And I'm just going to leave my work for a little while and go celebrate Bailey.
So you know this is just gonna be the president and the mayor?
I don't care. It is Bailey Rue graduation. Okay, go out there. Walk in here.
Oh, my God.
Go on. Yeah, seriously.
Oh, my God.
Go around the corner. Okay, Bailey.
I'm here.
Yay, Bailey! Yay! See?
Now I sit?
Now you sit. And this just plays until it starts, because that's what you would be doing.
Yeah, we'd be walking in.
See?
I'm a bit underwhelmed right now.
Tonight, video has surfaced of an African-American man being chased down and killed in a Georgia community. His family says he was just out jogging. Breonna Taylor, the 26-year-old Louisville first responder, shot eight times and killed by police.
This is 46-year-old George Floyd. He is the man who died in police custody on Monday.
Over the last several hours, the situation here has really deteriorated. Police started pushing and clearing out the street.
Um, I am not okay. We're experiencing the trauma of racial terror and black public execution and people hurting and dying and grief. Let me tell you, justice is just a minimum. We have had shadow enslavement. Jim Crow redlining. Police staring at what we're dealing with today. And it's genocide is what is happening to our black people in this nation. The ally community, thank you for being here, being bold. But it's not enough that you come to these places and you stand here. You must go to your old places and you must raise your voice in the same manner with the same energy in your private spaces. Do the right thing.
The ground shifted. There was COVID, just shutting everything down. And suddenly, there was Ahmaud Arbery. And then there was Breonna Taylor. Then there was George Floyd. But there was so much going on to do with race in this country that it has left me spinning. Being white, being a woman, and being middle-aged, I don't trust my voice to be a legitimate advocate. I mean, I hope I am. Now, people want to know more, and I don't know that I am qualified. Being white, it is so easy to put up a yard sign and not really even understand the issues or understand what that really means. That can really lead to complacency and that you think you've done your job. You can't abdicate responsibility. We, white people, are the people who have to write the check. You know, my heart supports it.
Now, in Evanston, a battle over the city's reparations plan.
Lots in the community are questioning why the money goes directly to the banks, why people can't have a cash payment.
Claiming that this is nothing more than the housing program.
The Evanston City Council is set to vote Monday on a bill to give reparations to black residents. But some residents are saying not so fast.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sebastian Als, and I'm one of the organizers with Evanston Rejects Racist Reparations. We're here today to protest and demonstration against the current iteration of the city of Evanston's reparations plan. This program, as it is, is incomplete, and it makes no sense to go forward with it.
How divisive this Evanston reparations bill is becoming. We ask that everyone just wait. Go back to the drawing board. We implore the Evanston public to join us in resisting this initiative.
Reparations are meant to close the racial wealth gap. The program that the city of Evanston is offering does not do that at all. We want a real program. We don't want a program that's a fraud. This is important.
They say in America that only 1 in 6 white people support reparations. The fact that so many white people in Evanston support this, that should tell you it's not reparations.
That's the warning.
Just basically, I'm just talking about the data. You know, what is happening now is we're gonna recycle programming that we've already done for decades and decades that hasn't helped to close the racial wealth gap.
No, when you're incepting something that you're trying to bring out, it has to be near perfect. And this is just a bunch of sloppy crap that they have put together. They're literally throwing it against the wall to see what will stick and what will not stick.
There are possible legal ramifications where the whole program in and of itself could get thrown out. And that itself could shut down the reparations movement as a whole.
Whatever the vote tomorrow, it's not over. It's just beginning. And we are going to follow them and this process in Evanston.
My hope is, is that some of these Aldermen will finally recognize, okay, maybe this isn't the right thing to do.
I think what they're offering us is an insult. And we decided elderly homeowners should get the first reparations that's gonna be spread over a 10-year period. And now the city of Evanston is balking on that.
The proposal, as from what I understand it, is they're trying to vote for the first $400,000 to go for a housing program. Not happening. It should not be.
Now's the time for you to stand up and show what you're about. We hear what they say, okay? We read what they put in paper, but then I'll wait till the vote, okay? Before I make any kind of decision about the consistency of Evanston with saying one thing and then doing totally the opposite when it comes to application.
I had been really obsessed with defending the case for reparations on a local level. And it was just nonstop. Aye. It was sleepless nights. It was always doing more research. And I did that while managing the rest of my life, being the alderman of the 5th Ward. Technically, it's part-time. I can't work 40, 60 hours a week for $15,000 a year. I can't do it. My first responsibility is to my children. And I have sacrificed a lot being the alderman. And it's been uncomfortable for my family. My daughter has not been able to even walk the dog in peace sometimes. People have intimidated her. It's been a lot of stress on my mother to see her only child treated so cruelly. And then just the time, because of the way that I serve, I don't know how to say, I can't help you right now, homeless family. You know, find another way. I only know how to find a solution for them. I only know how to do everything that I can to help them.
And while the whole nation is watching, there are people that are waiting for this to fail.
Because I'm not able to balance it. I'm not able to turn the service off. So I have just committed to the balance of this term. And then after that, I'll have to heal and repair damages that have been done to my life and to my family.
But for our black residents, I just ask for your patience.
Good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Hagerty, mayor of the city of Evanston. It is Monday, March 22nd, 2021. And I call this public hearing to order. I'm now gonna open it. And we'll start with Alderman Rue Simmons.
Thank you all for establishing this path forward to reparations in Evanston. The reparations subcommittee recommends city council adopt Resolution 37-R-21 to authorize the implementation of the local reparation restorative housing program and the initial program budget of $400,000. I move approval.
Second, we are now gonna move to public comment.
Did you see who's in the meeting?
Dr. Sandy Darity first.
Oh, he's anti.
The Evanston plan does very little about the equity gap produced by segregation and redlining.
You perpetuated the systemic racism and added age discrimination.
We want cash payments. Robin promised us that.
And the push forward appears to be more oriented towards photo ops and marketing, something that simply isn't true.
First, I want to support the passage. I also think we should have on the agenda cash payments.
I can't tell if he was for or against it.
Don't slam the door on something that can be positive for our community.
That's right, Ms. Adams.
Yes, it's small, but it's a start. And we must start somewhere. It is a sign that Evanston cares about families that look like mine.
If you vote no tonight, you will be on the wrong side of history.
If we do not step forward now, all of these other reparations programs in the United States will probably suffer as well.
But most of all, we in Evanston are leading the way to heal a nation.
I love her.
Thank you to Alderman Rue Simmons. Not only did you push us forward, but you made us believe we could do it. I think this step is gonna pull all of America forward. Uh, city clerk, could you please take the role on this historic vote tonight?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Saffordin.
Aye.
Alderman Bell.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
And Alderman Fleming.
Oh.
All right. So on a eight-to-one vote, the Evanston City Council approved adoption of Resolution 37-R-27, authorizing the implementation of the Evanston local reparations.
Good job.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Congratulations to you.
We did it. It's happening. You okay, mother?
I'm Mimi so happy.
Yeah. I wish we didn't have those negative comments, though.
She did a great job. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to you.
I'm so very proud. She's been amazing all her life. This is just one more amazing something from my daughter.
This week, Evanston, Illinois, made history.
The nation's first government-backed reparations initiative for black Americans was approved this week in Evanston, Illinois.
In a near-unanimous vote, Evanston City Council voted to approve the first installment of $400,000 to be distributed among eligible black households.
The money can be used for down payments, mortgage payments, repairs, or home improvements.
Many hope the historic program will pave the way for more reparations in other cities.
This is the international headquarters. But really, it is, it is the headquarters. It's just, it's just myself. And most recently, we have an employee, Shawn. I have launched a nonprofit called First Repair. First, because we are the first in the nation to have a funded reparation plan with tangible steps and measurable outcomes. So this is the reception area. It's Shawn's office and it's our conference room. And here's our break room. And then here's my office. It's really nothing to it. This is where I do my work every day. It's what I do full-time now. I retired this year as alderman. And now I'm able to singularly focus on reparations in Evanston and beyond. There has been great interest in advancing reparations beyond Evanston. That passing vote has set a precedent. And it's shown a possibility that others are now looking to as a reference. It's, okay, they did this in Evanston. We can do this here.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning, good morning, good morning. Thank you all for your sponsorship on HR40. I was so excited. Thank you. Thank you.
This idea of HR40 was to finally have us in dignity and have the American people say, that's the right thing to do.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I can't thank you enough for this markup.
Today's gonna be a long contentious moment.
Well, I'm ready for this. I feel a moment in history. I'm excited. Let's do this, Mr. Chairman. All right.
I now call up HR40, the Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African Americans Act. This legislation is long overdue.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very pleased to be able to speak in support of my legislation, HR40, which I introduce that establishes a commission to study and develop reparation proposals for African Americans.
Was historic. The first time the bill ever got to the moment of something that is so integral to the process of governance, which is called a markup, which means the bill is on its way to possible vote on the floor and to become law.
And here we are today, marking up for the first time in the history of the United States of America, any legislation that deals directly with the years and centuries of slavery.
Look, everyone knows how evil slavery was. Wrong as wrong could be. But this is not, this is, this is not, not what we want to be passing.
Reparation is divisive. It speaks to the fact that we are a hapless, hopeless race that never did anything but wait for white people to show up and help us. And it's a falsehood.
I would offer that I think this is the wrong path for the future of our nation. And I think that is the problem here. And I think this is not the direction we want to carry our country forward. The opposition was that happened then, this is now. A very weak argument, shallow argument. A total refusal to really see slavery for what it was. It was a crime, but no one paid the price.
HR40 is a concentrated effort to right a wrong and to do it with dignity and study and respect. I can't imagine why any one of us would not vote for HR40, the Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals. And I asked my colleagues to vote yes on this bill.
Reporting quorum being present, the question is on the motion to report the bill, HR40, as amended favorably to the House. Those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye. Those no. The ayes have it, and the bill is ordered reported favorably.
Thank you.
I had a great weight on my shoulders that was lifted a little bit. It was so emotional to see that the journey had made a leap. What I want to see happen is that we move the bill to the floor. And it's urgent that it gets passed. And my commitment is it must be passed. There must be a commission. I'm pinching myself to see if this is really happening. HR40 is the significant singular affirmation of us and our journey. This place called America is as much a part of us and we are a part of it.
The purpose of this meeting is to get you prepared for when the release of the application occurs on September 21st. The idea is that hopefully we can get funding out the door dispersed by the end of November, beginning of December.
The kitchen, I need the kitchen done. It's the, those are the original cabinets. They're dry rotted. They just fall in a part. This is falling down in the bottom there. The drawers is falling apart. Oh, see, they, that dry rot up there. The cup is falling, disconnecting up there. The floor, that's wet. See the floor?
Well, we're going to go down to Fleetwood, Jordan, and we're going to fill out an application for the housing restoration program for the first phase in reparations for blacks in Evanston and hopefully get some compensation for my mom. It's Karma to help you right over here.
Hi. Do you have any documentation with you?
Yeah, she got the closing. And got the trustee.
Do you have your driver's license with you?
I do. I have a obituary. Okay. That has my mother's name listed in it. So Dad was here in 1947, his Evanston senior year at high school. Okay. There, book. And there he is. So it shows that he was a graduate of Foster School and Evanston Township High School. And you all are all set. Good luck.
Well, thank you much. You're a scholar in the same.
No problem.
Submitting, submitting.
Good job, Belika.
Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you.
My understanding is that reparations is an attempt to repair the harm that's cost us economically. When I started looking, no. This is not the answer to reparations that we're approaching in Evanston. But the longest journey begins with the first step. Good morning. Either you're part of the solution or you're part of the problem. I don't want to be a part of the problem. If this is the way we have to start with it, let's start. We have 10 years. But I want this to be the boilerplate. I want this to be the initiative for cities all over the United States to accept that we're here to stay.
Good morning. How about you? I'm good. Hi, Mr. Sutton. I'm good. How are you? Is this one me?
First, we're gonna have an introduction of our new committee members. Carla Sutton.
Being a third-generation Evanstonian and an active member in the community, I've had a chance to realize that Evanston now stands at the brink of history. We're in a very good position now to set the tone, which I hope the nation will pick up the ball and follow. We are under the eyes now of the whole world.
Shawn, you know what we need, actually? Is the labels, the name tags. Okay, I gotta prepare something to say. We are ready to receive about 50 leaders that have been working on local reparation initiatives in their communities. Hey, Tina, has anyone showed up? Oh, wow. Great.
The value of Evanston and the work of Robin Rue Simmons is, is one of those turning points. Because there is this pent-up yearning for a concrete example that it can be done. Symbolically, Evanston woke up the world. So everyone, municipalities, university, I mean, is looking to Evanston. And the hope is that what we'll end up doing is creating a national network of groups.
This conference will and should go down in history as the Evanston Conference. It is a distinct honor to be representing the Carrickham Reparations Commission at this historical event.
I bring you greetings from New Orleans, Louisiana.
I am with World One Development in Tulsa, Oklahoma, home of Black Wall Street.
I'm from Los Angeles.
Amherst, Massachusetts.
I'm from Philadelphia.
Omaha, Nebraska.
When I started this work, I simply was trying to repair some of the injury that had been done in my own community. I had no idea how big this whole local reparations movement would get.
I'm Mayor Michael B. Hancock of Denver, Colorado.
I'm from Atlanta, Georgia.
I'm a founding member of the Kansas City chapter of the National Black United Front.
In 2020, we talked about reparations, but we didn't know how to go by doing it. But one day, I was looking at TV and I saw this bad sister out of Evanston, Illinois. She inspired me. I said, if they can do it in Evanston, Illinois, why can't we do it in Detroit? We 85% black. For me, this is the most important thing that we, as a people, should be focusing on in this moment. Like, this is our shot to address all the disparities in, in, in one, you know, one container.
This country says that it values liberty and justice for all and equity and inclusion and freedom.
So San Francisco has a population of over 350,000.
That's not been the reality of black America.
Less than 6% of the population is African American.
Recognizing the legal challenges that we know are coming up, we still need to be about the task of beginning to create a new narrative and a new legal framework.
I realize that now I'm a part of a movement, a national movement, one that has great momentum to finally grapple with the injury inflicted by slavery and the deep-seated racism that we endure today. We're here to represent and advocate for HR40, ladies. We're here for HR40. We're all here for the things that empower our community. Just want to make sure you have this fly.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here.
Good luck to you today.
Thank you. Trauma in the black community runs so deep. The injury is so deep. It's been passed down through generations. And for us to move forward, And for us to move forward, everyone in our community, all Americans, need to commit to reconciling with that past.
My name is Robin Rue Simmons and I am here in solidarity with each of you as we fight for the issues we value. Reparations for people of African descent in America is long overdue. We don't want a piece of freedom. We want the whole package and that's reparations. H R forty now, reparations now.
There are thousands of communities all across this nation that need repair. It is my life's work. I feel truly assigned to do this work. I wake up every morning with an assignment on what is my next action? Who should I try to connect with? Who am I gonna meet? What partnership? What new idea? I will not be satisfied until I see the quality of life for black Americans is truly on par with that of white Americans. We have made a start in Evanston, but there is so much more work that needs to be done.
Let's give it up, let's give it up, let's give it up. Was that wonderful or what? Was that inspirational? Well, we gonna get ready for panel discussion.
Let's give it up, please, Representative Sheila Jackson. Please.
I declare and proclaim that America has just gotten again. They have the ability now to call themselves the supporters of the June 8th National Holiday. This is America.
Thank you so much, Brother Daniel. Thank you all for being here today. First, I want to welcome you to the New Black Wall Street Market. Uh, this marketplace is a, the birth child of our founder, Mr. Bill Allen of the head, we created the Allen Entrepreneurial Institute uh, twenty years ago. With the charge of how we increase the size of the number of our minority women on the floor, we got no visibility. So this is our humble contribution uh, to making things better for our parents and folks for giving us opportunities for our people. We're excited to have people like you on the stage. Brian has been a leader of our community for years. I got a chance to see the stars, I got to see them. These stars, we are going to be just awesome. This is just all about helping people with their social system and environment that really help us build our community. And everyone who gave us power, talent, it's given to God. We're building the fellow people's state that we have. A lot of real estate. But I want to encourage each and every one of you as you go through this process of reparations and through our lead in your communities. Uh, I see the businesswoman here who talks about certification. I see leaders here who've been on the trail of reparations and freedom fighting. I see all kind of resources here. And I really want to encourage each and every one of you to look at how we can inspire our generations coming up under us and use what we have to push our agenda forward. And our agenda and our contributions, how do we create more entrepreneurs? How do we create more black owned businesses of size? And so we're working very diligently to push that vision forward. And again, it's exciting to see my she-ros and my heroes that I grew up with, learning uh, their writings and learning from them, to see them here at this market, something that we put together and had a chance to be involved in. So I want to just encourage every person here that's working on advancing our people to look for us, look to us rather, uh, as a place to where you can come and make it happen. Look to us as a venue, look to us as a partner and anything that we can do to advance economic development in our community, that's what we're all about. And so I also want to thank Mr. Nibadi, who leads us in these kind of cultural affairs and Richard Jordan, who's not here today. Uh, but again, thank you, you're welcome. Please come back and let's do more because we have so much work to do in order to really advance our communities. And Brother Daniels, thank you for keeping us in mind and we hope that we can also host you in greater ways and in more ways in the coming future. So again, thank you all so much for being here and have a great evening.
All right, thank you. That is, this, this, this play, this space, my brother Nibadi kept telling me about the New Black Wall Street, the New Black Wall Street and I, buddy, I. And one day I came and I saw this and I said, what a spectacular place. What a spectacular example of black excellence. It is absolutely that. Well, we're gonna move right ahead with our panel discussion and I want to introduce our panelists. And uh, you know, I can now attribute it to having a senior moment because I'm looking at my notes and I said, you ain't got all that you need in your notes, but we'll work that out because I don't have all the introductions I need to make. But in this order, and we're gonna start on this side as we bring them to the stage. First and foremost, would you first please welcome to the stage? And wait a minute, how she's gonna get up on the stage? We got that worked out? Okay, I want to be sure, I want everybody stumbling now. Let's welcome Robin Rue Simmons. Robin Rue Simmons. Yeah, you take that seat over there. Next up, right here from the Atlanta community. She has done so much. So we had the privilege the other day of being a place, a place called uh, Kement. Um, the Kement House, had dinner there and everything, but she is a legend in this area. Would you please welcome Dr. Mama Nandabantu? Next up, we want to welcome to the sta, where she at? Come on now. We anticipate we're gonna leave a seat for Councilman Michael Bond. So, but we're gonna come right next. Next up after her, you saw him in the movie Hand by Hand, just really working, one of the great thought leaders and organizers, a former male co-chairman in Cobra, now the executive director of First Repair. Would you welcome to the stage Cam Howard. Cam Howard. And all the way from Washington DC with the National African American Reparations Commission, would you welcome Jessica Ann Mitchell? And next, one of the things that I wanted to achieve was to affect a connection between the New Black Wall Street and the original Black Wall Street. We can never, ever, ever forget what happened to our people in the massacre of nineteen twenty-one. So when I got here, I immediately jumped on the phone to start calling people. I said, because that's what we do with Institute of the Black Wall Twenty First Century, the connectivity, the collaboration. And when we decided to do this town hall meeting, I said, we must have people from Oakla, from Tulsa, Oklahoma here. So would you please first welcome Kristi Williams? Kristi from Tulsa, Oklahoma. She a star too. She gonna tell you, she just, she just got some major award and she has gotten many, many awards from all the way from Tulsa, Oklahoma. And then now, I think she is the only African American councilwoman in Tulsa. I may be wrong, she'll correct me. But I also understand she could really cook too. It was back in the room back there talking about how she. I mean, we are multi talented people, right? She can be all this stuff. Vanessa Hall Harper, all the way from Tulsa. All right. And again, last but not least, because the councilwoman will be joining us as well. But y'all heard on the radio yesterday and y'all hear on Roland Martin Unfiltered, because she don't allow herself to be filtered. I don't know what I'm gonna do with her. I love her, but Lord have mercy, she's so hard to handle. Would you please welcome Dr. Julie Anne Malvoe to the stage? All right, help her up. All right. Okay, we're gonna get right into this and when the councilman comes, he can take a seat and we're ready to go. Well, first and foremost. Oh, all right, that's right, no, Lord, I'll be then, I'll be excommunicated from Atlanta. Would you please welcome to the stage, she plays such a wonderful, wonderful role. Lord have mercy, if I forgot her, I'd never ever be forgiven and should not be forgiven, but I'm old. Dr. Sheila Fleming, Delta Sigma Theta is in the house. Greetings.
Good afternoon, it's still afternoon. Yes, 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 good afternoon. I know you've been sitting a while, so just stand up and pull up your fist and say reparations now. Stand up and say reparations now. Yes, now. Thank you, thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Just three days ago, we recognized the day that Texas enslaved people were finally emancipated, which also denoted the freedom of all enslaved people in the contiguous United States. So let us first greet our God and the memory of our ancestors. For those who were kidnapped on the African continent, reparations now. For those who transitioned to the spirit world during the Middle Passage, reparations now. For those whose way that with tears has been watered, reparations now. For those who worked day in and day out for no pay, no vote and no education, reparations now. For those who died in Tulsa in nineteen twenty-one on the original Black Wall Street, reparations now. For all the sisters and brothers who were lynched, reparations now. And we can go on and on as the film denoted. To Dr. Daniels, Mr. Nibadi, NARC commissioners, esteemed panelists, town hall attendees, those on live stream, I bring you greetings on behalf of President Rosalind Harper and the members of the Atlanta Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Dr. Harper is here, would you stand, Dr. Harper? Our fearless leader and any sisters in the house, sororities in the house, please stand. You will know in a minute why I am doing this. Yes, yes. This is our chapter's centennial year and we celebrate one hundred years of service in the Atlanta community. During this one hundred years, we have stirred up good trouble for our people's progress in nearly all aspects of society, education, voting rights, the arts, health, and the list goes on. So today, we are here to continue the legacy as we lead the Divine Nine into support for reparations for our people. Atlanta Alumni Chapter wanted to make systemic change in the city of Atlanta so that our children will reap the benefits of their ancestors' struggles. We met and met and met. We researched. We sponsored community forums that included reparations experts like Dr. Daniels. We surveyed our members about their personal experiences with harm. And we published a position paper making the case to the Atlanta City Council to pass, to, that introduced reparations to the city council. I am overjoyed to say that the legislation to establish a reparations study commission was introduced by Councilman Michael Julian Bond and passed unanimously by the entire council in October twenty twenty-three. All of this happened in Atlanta, Georgia in June twenty twenty-one. All of this happened because in Atlanta, Georgia in June twenty twenty-one, the Atlanta Alumni Chapter recommended a resolution that was unanimously passed during the fifty-fifth National Convention of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. The convention resolved that it's more than nine hundred chapters with hundreds of thousands of members should educate their service areas about H R forty, which calls for the appointment of a federal task force for study reparations for black Americans. But the impetus and motivation for our chapter's work was the success of Ms. Robin Rue Simmons in Evanston, Illinois and the First Repair Movement. She inspires me and so many others. When I attended the First Repair Conference in Evanston, Illinois last November, led by Robin, her example inspired, inspired those who were members of the Divine Nine attending that conference to establish an organization called Black Greek Letter Organizations for Reparations. Beaklow's vision is that the Divine Nine supports the reparations movement. We hope to gather, we hope to gather leaders of the National Panelistic Council with leaders of NARC, Reparations United, First Repair, Incobra and other organizations to work until we have a federal study commission and ultimately our people receive their just due. It's an arduous task, but too much is given, much is expected. In my mind, what has been missing in the reparations movement is the Divine Nine. We are ready, we are here today to stand with all of you and the leaders of the reparations movement to commit to our part as a chapter to make reparations a reality for our people. The Atlanta Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta is proud to be a part of this landmark occasion during our centennial year. I greet you and I salute all of you as supporters and advocates for reparations in the legacy of Cali House, reparations now. Mother Moore, Queen Moore, reparations now. The legacy of Dr. Mary McLeod Batum, reparations now. The founders of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority and the founders of all the Divine Nine, reparations now. Imario Medelli, who taught me about reparations. And last but not least, and really not last, Representative John Conyers Juniors, reparations now. I greet you, thank you.
Dr. Sheila Fleming, all right. Okay. All right, I'd also like to acknowledge and recognize uh, someone who has contributed for a long, long time on the battlefield. Many of you know him locally and perhaps all, uh, has been organizing, organizing, organizing. Uh, he's, he, he kind of raised me up a little bit. So, you know, I mean, I owe him a lot because, you know, when somebody raises you up, you have to always acknowledge them. And uh, you know, it's brother named Jamoke Ipateo is out in the house. Where you at, Jamoke? Where's Jamoke? All right. Southern region though, coordinator for, in Cobra, also consultant, a senior advisor for First, for First Repair and also an advisor for Reparations United. Now I want to have people, because I, I've got my notes mixed up. So I'm gonna have to ask everybody to do just a quick introduction so I don't mess anything up. So we already know Robin Rue Simmons, but it's just your name, your organization, all the way across, and then we'll start the questioning. So let's start with Robin Rue Simmons. Would you introduce yourself?
Peace, and I'm Robin Rue Simmons, I'm the founder and executive director of First Repair. I am a NARC commissioner, I am a lifetime member of Incobra, and I am blessed to be here with you.
All right, right here.
Hotep Abargani, greetings everyone, my name is Dr. Mama Nobantu, most of the time folks call me Mama Nobantu, and I am here representing the city of Decatur. I am the co-chair of the Reparations Committee for the Black Alliance for Black, the Black, I'm sorry, the Beacon Hill Alliance for Black, for human rights, always get squared up. Anyway, so I'm a lifetime member, also of Incobra, and I have been pushed a lot from brother Jamoke, you know, to really get involved, and here I am. I never thought I'd be on this stage, but thank you very much.
Greetings, everyone, before I introduce myself, I would just like for everybody to keep Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee in your prayers, you saw her on the film, she is our national leader in Washington. And she was recently diagnosed with cancer, and so we want to make sure that everybody here pray for her.
I'm Cam Howard, executive director of Reparations United, former national male coach here at Incobra. I'm a NARC commissioner and convener, co-convener with Dr. Daniels and Dr. Amara Enya of the Global Circle for Reparations and Healing.
Hi, everyone, I'm Jessica Ann Mitchell Iwuyor, I am a NARC commissioner and a member of Incobra, and I'm also the founder of the National Black Cultural Information Trust.
My name is Christy Williams, I am a 1921 Tulsa Race Massacre descendant. I'm also a Creek Freedmen descendant, I also represent Tulsa with First Repair. And I am also a now a National Geographic Explorer, and the founder of Black History Saturdays, and as many of you may know, others, a lot of other states, including Oklahoma, where I'm from, where we can't teach Black history in our school system, so I started my own school and my own library of fan books.
Good afternoon, my name is Vanessa Hall Harper, I am the District One City Councilor, I do represent Greenwood, Black Wall Street. Serving, finished serving my fourth term, so I've been elected since 2016, and one of the co-sponsors for a resolution for the city of Tulsa in 2021, and also worked to create the Beyond Apology Report, which was a community-led process that we have continued to work through and we are going through in the city of Tulsa. And last but not least, I am a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated.
All right, hey, 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 is in the house.
Had to throw that in there.
I'm not gonna be catty and tell my friend here, whatever. I'm not gonna do that, however. I'm Dr. Julianne Malvoe, economist, author, television and radio commentator. You can hear me on WPFW FM, you can see me on Roland Martin, or you can see me on the post office wall, because sometimes that's where you put America's most wanted. I am a member of, one of the original members of NARC. I'm also recently a board member of First Repair. My tagline is, "I walk, write, talk, raise hell, and try to get paid for some of it."
All right, okay, now, we're ready to roll, all right, we're gonna get this conversation on. It is an incredibly powerful conversation, and we want to begin, the film was just, I was almost in tears, Lord have mercy, it was just so inspirational, and so much that went into it, and so much that this great leader has done in terms of her courage and vision, and it comes through in this film holistically, in terms of her family, mother, and grandmother, and all those things. But Robin Rue Simmons, the big payback is very moving, is a very moving account. But would you share with our audience how well the program is going in Evanston now? Have there been any modifications, for example? And to what degree has it actually done the objective that even the person who got converted, he said, "I hope this will be a model for the country," so give us a report.
I'm happy to report on the progress in Evanston, and so the film ended with us having passed the resolution and setting aside $10 million, so much has happened since then. That was $10 million of recreational cannabis sales tax. We have added an additional $10 million from real estate transfer taxes. We have expanded the remedy, not just to include home improvement and home purchase and paying down mortgage balance, but also cash payments as a form of reparations. And I'm really proud that we got there, because one of the most important practices of reparations is that the harmed community, Black folks, are prescribing and informing what redress looks like. And so we saw on the film that we had a very organized, small but organized group of the community that wanted cash, and we were able to get to cash, so we've been dispersing cash. Like Mr. Sutton said in the film, that the elders, those that experience harm directly, folks that were 18 between 1919 and 1969 is when we had the harm, received their reparations benefit first. Just to put it in perspective, Evanston's not Atlanta, so we're a small city of 75,000. We had 620 applications, 140 of them were what we called ancestors, those that had direct harm. They've been dispersed, so they have received their $25,000 check with an acknowledgement and an apology from the city, and there's been incredible value add even to that $25,000. So in some cases, that $25,000 has a value add of up to $100,000 with the different additional services. And we have 454 direct descendants. So that's, Evanston is as young as my daughter's age, who's doing well, always, people always ask, "How's my daughter and how's the dog?" Both are doing fine. Leila just turned eight, that's a dog, and Bailey did graduate from Yale two years ago, so she's in her career. And she's actually program manager at First Repair, in addition to some other things. And so we have begun dispersing the direct descendants. We have dispersed out of the 20 million, 4.8 million, $193 recipients, and we continue to roll that out. That has inspired the community at large, so our interfaith community has really stood up in a major way, adding to the program, raising an additional million dollars, and being a commitment and advocate for reparations. We have inspired many other cities to take their first steps towards repair, and we're committed to continuing to do the work, regardless of the folks that don't like us doing the work, including lawsuits and things that are trying to get us to stop this work. Our city, and I'm very proud of our city manager, our mayor, the city council, that supports this work, and that's very important, because stakeholders can't do it alone, you have to have the support of your city council and your city manager in a city manager form of government and allies. And so we've been very fortunate to get that support in the city of Evanston.
All right, I'll give it a hand for Robin Rue Simmons. Now, Dr. Mama Nobantu, there are lots, there's lots of movement of reparations in the greater Atlanta area. Would you please talk to us about the progress that's being made in Decatur?
Yes, there is quite a bit that's happening in the Decatur community, the city of Decatur, because there's two Decatures, there's the unincorporated Decatur, and there's the city of Decatur. And the city of Decatur, I think, is only about two and a half mile squares. But we were fortunate that back in March, our commissioners, led by Ms. Myers, voted unanimously to give us $25,000 to work on, continue the work that we had started a couple of years ago on researching all the harms that had been done to the area of Beacon Hill. And Beacon Hill has been around for a long time, the area's been around town. I think the Muskogee Indians were there prior to African-Americans coming in. And so we have looked at the research, and so with this fund that we're now getting, we can do more research with that. We've had Georgia State students coming in, the professor Akunlele Umoja out of Georgia State. They have done a tremendous, tremendous amount of work, and have given our committee, the reparations committee with the Beacon Hill Black Alliance for Human Rights, I said it right this time, okay? So that we can further the work, and thanks to Robin and inspiration we've got from seeing how locally, you know, if you can help our people to understand what reparations mean on a local basis, I think people will understand when we get to the national and the federal level, that we'll be able to make it happen. So it has to be from the bottom up, is where I see it, and the bottom up starts with the local cities. I'm from San Francisco, and I saw how many, many Black businesses were destroyed. And then that was before I moved here in Atlanta in 2006. So what I, I've already seen it happen in San Francisco, and here I am in Atlanta, seeing it happen again. And the research is so important. That research has to be done in every major city where there's a large population of African-Americans. And I come from also a little town, East Palo Alto, California, some people call it Nairobi. And we're doing a legacy project now, and they're going across the country, interviewing people who lived in that area, and we hope, and there's a young former student of mine who's working on reparations in the city of East Palo Alto. So, you know, I just want to thank, thank you in allowing me to be here to talk about the city, and I'm sure I'm missing something, but I'm gonna pass it on, maybe I can come back and remember what I thought.
Oh, no, you'll have another round, but let's give it up for Dr. Malvoe. And by the way, let me, let me, let...
Nobantu Akuwana.
Yes, so, and let me also say that back in the day, because I was telling people about war stories now, because we know when Nairobi was developed, brother named Omo Wallace Sotoway, by the way, was the leader of that movement, and that, oh, that was such a beacon of hope and promise for us. Now, the councilman is not here, but I also need to acknowledge that Fulton County has a reparations initiative, unfortunately, Brother Coleman could not be here, but I just want to acknowledge, there's a lot of very, very good work being done here, that's being plowed up. But Cam Howard, as you well know, I mean, there's some people who are saying, they're naysayers. They're saying, this Evanston stuff, these local reparations, that's getting in the way of real reparations, which is federal reparations. So number one, what is your response to that, that issue of that, that's being presented? And secondly, where do we stand with HR40? Because we saw the Congresswoman, we're talking about where she is now, and again, you've been in the forefront of that, so if you could just tackle those two questions for us, I think that would be very helpful.
So, many people who make that assessment, that federal reparations is the only form of reparations, they do, they do so by saying that only the federal government can solve the racial wealth gap. And we're totally clear with that, that that is something that has to come from federal resources. Local and state municipalities cannot address the racial wealth gap, it's just too big of an issue for them to address. However, there are other things that can happen at the state and local level that can lead to repair in the homes of many Blacks living in these spaces. But also, it propels the federal legislature legislators to act. For instance, when we started this process, when I started this process many years ago as Legislative Commission Chair at Incobra, we only had probably 35 Black congresspersons, and we couldn't get all of them on the bill legislatively. We had 55, and all of it, probably, probably three or four didn't get on. But we had, ended with 196 cosponsors in the last Congress. So all of those other cosponsors were not Black cosponsors. And it was what they were seeing happening all around the country on the local level that led them to say, now I see what this reparations thing is all about. And so we were able to demonstrate that there's political will all around the country. And there was no political will 10 years ago around the country. In the last Congress, 88% of Democrats in the last Congress supported both the federal, the House bill and the Senate bill, 88%. Over 230 congresspersons and senators combined, Democrats said yes to reparations. We just didn't get it to the floor. And the three largest cities in America, the governors of those states have already signed reparations commission bills, New York, California, and Illinois. Over probably a thousand or more local Democratic state legislators, like my sister here, have initiated reparations processes in their cities and states. So we've demonstrated all around the country that there's political will for reparations within the Democratic Party. And so, as we move forward, the only thing that we must now get in alignment with this political will is the president. And so, when it comes to HR40, it cannot pass through Congress. We don't have, we have a Republican-led Congress, this is a partisan issue. And then you have the Senate rules that says you need a 60-vote filibuster-proof majority in order to pass it in the Senate. So HR40 cannot move forward congressionally. The only thing that can happen right now, that can happen right now, is that the president signs an executive order to establish a commission. And that's what all the local action has done, is allowed us to say to the president, the political will is there in your party. Look at everything that's happening within your party, the political will is there. You can sign this on, you're totally dependent on the Black vote in order to win. You need to do this now, not only because the country is calling for it, Black America is calling for it, but because it will serve you in this upcoming election. So, I believe that the possibility is very high if we collectively make the demand from the president and not look for Congress, because it's not gonna happen in Congress. But it's up to, you know, I'm wearing this campaign, this button called Earn the Black Vote Organization, Reparations United is the lead organization in the national Earn the Black Vote campaign, which is just targeting the president and saying, this is something you must do now, if you want to win in November. So, when it comes to HR40, I think we're in a good position, but collectively, you have to make the, make the demand.
All right, let's give it up for Cam Howard. One of the other points that Cam, that Cam has also made that I remember is that we are going, we are going to win, there's no question about that. Queen Mother Moore and Cali House, and they, they are with us, we are going to win. But it also means that the huge amounts of resources that are needed to re, to enhance the program in Evanston and various other places, will be available through federal resources. But as we are putting together, through the efforts of the local resource center that Robin has put together with our support, it means that therefore there will also be a structure already in place. We will have built the architecture for receiving reparations as well, so there's a lot at stake. And so, and it, by the way, it's so exciting, I hope you heard what Cam said. At one point, there are only 50 people who had signed it. 196, that is just, our sister in Kichi Taifa ain't here, but I have to quote her all the time, reparations is on fire in the United States of America, we on, we on the move. And as we're on the move, we're working out the issues, we're having debates and discussions. And by the way, it's good to have debates and discussion when there's something to have a debate and discussion about. Because I remember for a long time, Queen Mother Moore sort of operated on my brain and brought me into the movement, because I didn't even know nothing about reparations. I was a master's degree, trying to be a doctor ignoramus, until Queen Mother Moore grabbed hold of me and shook me up and said, Negro, don't you know, you're not a Negro, and did a whole lot of things, so that's all good stuff. But my point is, it's such a good thing to try to figure out, what do we do next? How do we answer various questions? One of the things Jessica Ann Mitchell, and we call you Jam affectionately, and Jam is a gem, is this issue of comprehensive reparations. Trying to articulate a way in which people understand that it's not a little of this and a little of that, we want it all. So would you talk to us about the work that you've done, if you've done really great work in terms of articulating the concept of comprehensive reparations?
Sure, so there are a lot of misconceptions about reparations, and you saw like a few of it shown in the film. At National Black Cultural Information Trust, we share news, information, and resources that uplifts the collective freedom of Black communities, and a lot of times, that includes battling against myths and disinformation. And along the way, one of the key topics that has been inundated with misinformation has been the topic of reparations. So we have two programs about reparations that gives people the basis and background history of reparations, and then we have communicating reparations that works directly with task forces and commissions on helping to, helping folks articulate... commissions on helping to, um, helping folks articulate the different initiatives that they're working on, how they benefit their communities. Um, so some of the number one misconceptions about reparations are it's only for slavery. We saw that in the film for people that were against reparations. Well, that was a long time ago. None of us are complicit, blah, blah, blah. Well, reparations are for slavery, but they're for more than slavery. They are for Jim Crow, as is evidenced in Evanston. They are for also modern day systemic racism. And so reparations are for three errors of harm, not just for enslavement. And, um, another thing that is often said is that those of us that are descendants of enslaved Africans, well, that happened to our ancestors, that didn't happen to you. But there has been epigenetic harm. I believe that they showed a, a, a piece of a report that Cam worked on, uh, the harm is in our genes that showcase the epigenetic harms. That means that things that happened to your ancestors actually show up in your DNA and show the long lasting and lingering impact. So reparations are for chattel slavery, the transatlantic slave trade, the era of Jim Crow apartheid, and for modern day systemic racism. And it impacts and reparations thus needs to cover all of the communities affected by that, meaning descendants of Africans enslaved in the United States, meaning people that were impacted by Jim Crow, who might not always be descendants of Africans, but usually are people of African descent as well. Um, I mean, I said that backwards, but who may not have been descendants of Africans enslaved in America, but are also descendants of Africans that were impacted by Jim Crow and the vestiges of chattel slavery and then modern day systemic racism that impacts the entire black community, no, despite your, your, your heritage or ethnic makeup or whatever. And so when we talk about comprehensive reparations, we want it all, like, um, Dr. Daniels said. I think there was one more point that I wanted to make, but I don't wanna continue to ramble on. Uh, but basically, oh, another thing, this is the last, one of the biggest misconceptions is that reparations are for cash only. I want a big fat check. Yes, I do. And I want it yesterday. Okay. Coming from people who were sharecropping right here in Georgia. I want my check. But I also understand that there has to be a lot to, a lot more to it than that. So we need structural changes throughout this society. So with comprehensive reparations, we're talking about, yes, cash payments, yes, also changes to structures throughout our society, how housing is implemented, our health, the food that we eat, the environmental racism that we continue to face, that continues to impact our communities. So with comprehensive reparations, we talking about comprehensively, holistically, everything that needs to change in order to protect and sustain the future of black America.
I don't think that was rambling. I think that was brilliant. All right. Really very well done. What incredible assets we have, uh, in terms of addressing these questions. I had the privilege, honor, I don't know what the right term is, to just return from Tulsa, Oklahoma, invited by Robin Ruth Simmons and First Repair for an incredible retreat that was held for reparations activists around the country in different regions who need an opportunity to be inspired with what they saw, but also to connect with each other and whatnot. And even though I talk a great deal about, um, Tulsa, actually I had not been there. I'd been to Oklahoma, did a lot of work with, with friends and allies in Oklahoma and knew some of the legislators and whatnot who were working on the issue. And I gotta say that it was, and it's, it was, it was a powerful emotional experience because of the tragedy that took place, but it was also an expiring experience, not only because what of our people did, but what the two of you who are here are doing. So I wanna just ask you, uh, and, and by the way, I mean, I think that the Tulsa massacre of nineteen twenty-one and the destruction of Greenwood, and by the way, I didn't, it's just, it was interesting, the education, cause I didn't really know Greenwood. It was, I didn't know how that whole history and we all, this new popularly black Wall Street, but it's good to know the education. Um, it's a wound on all of us, right? I mean, this is a wound to all black people, what happened, that massacre. And so I'm wondering, uh, Kristi, and I'm gonna ask also Vanessa to take the same question and take your time to both talk about your role and your work and tell us what more can we do? How can we in fact be stronger in our advocacy and connection, uh, with the work that's being done? So with our new celebrity, if you will, who's crowned appropriately, let's hear from you.
Uh, great question. Uh, you know, I, when you asked, what is the role? I think my role has changed so many times within the struggle and within this movement. Um, as I stated before, I am a nineteen twenty-one Tulsa race massacre descendant. My great Aunt Janie was in the Dreamland Theater on a secret date that she was not supposed to be on, when the massacre happened. And, um, so just imagine you're sneaking out on this date to the Dreamland Theater and a massacre happens, right? And you, it, I mean, she, she was able to escape. She ran away, ran to this little town called Claremore, which is about, I don't know, maybe thirty minutes away from Tulsa, and they left there walking. And she was so afraid to come back to Tulsa, it took her eight years to come back to Tulsa. And matter of fact, she, uh, in those days, you didn't do what they call shacking up. So, uh, her, her boyfriend's mom said, if y'all gonna stay here, gonna stay here, you gonna have to get married. So she married him. She didn't like him, but she married him after time tells. But because she was so afraid to come back to Tulsa. So I grew up knowing these stories and, um, I always knew about, uh, the massacre, but she didn't call it that. She didn't call it a riot. She called it that time when white people were killing black people in Tulsa. And my sister and I thought she was crazy because, you know, she had a, a brand new floor model color TV. A lot of people don't know what floor model TVs look like now, but, uh, she had one and she kept it in black and white. And she said, cause the color would ruin your eyes. And so she was our babysitter whenever my mom, you know, would go out. And so, uh, we used to have to watch the TV like this. We thought she was crazy, she told us these stories. But she was act- she was right. I was, uh, in the house one day and the news was on, I was in high school and, uh, I saw Johnny Cochran and, um, Charles Oak- Oak- Oakley talking about this, this riot. And the stories that they were telling and listening to the survivors, it hit me like a ton of bricks. And I said, that's what Aunt Janie was talking about. And so I always wanted to, um, know everything. Anytime they had a town hall meeting or whatever, I would get my mom, like, we gotta go to this meeting. So imagine I'm in high school, I should be out having fun, but I'm trying to be at the meetings in this city hall, because I wanted to learn all this stuff that was happening. And then I was like, we gotta tell this story, we gotta do something about it. So I was, um, that was my beginnings as a, a storyteller and learning why history and telling stories are so important. Um, and so, um, my role, um, in that I've always played in the background, I was the Ella Baker, uh, you know, and just supporting everybody during the work. And I'm still that. And now, um, when our governor, uh, Stitt signed House Bill seventeen seventy-five restricting how we teach black history and banning all, all these books and, and I have a responsibility to bear witness to what happened to my Aunt Janie, right? Um, and, and just telling her story and two survivors that I, I was friends with was Young and Odessa T. Clark. Um, and everything they poured into me, I have a responsibility to bear witness to that, to, to those stories. And so I started my own school, February fourth of twenty twenty-three, organized educators um, to teach black history. Our city councilor is one of those teachers. And I was so inspired also, uh, by NARC's ten-point plan. And it was number six, which is education and how important that role is educating our community. And I kinda just started feeling like, I can't, why am I fighting the government to teach our children about us? And so I said, you know what? I gotta take this in my own hands. And so in creating our own curriculum, um, we created a framework of cur- of curriculum, which is the past, present, future. Past starts with Africa, so the first three months, and this is all year round, y'all. This is not black history, but it's all year round. And so the first three months is about Africa. The next three months is about the present. And then the following three months is about the future, which I call beyond Juneteenth. So sixth graders and up, they know about NARC, they know about the ten-point plan, they know about the people on this stage. And I'm not just saying that, cause I'm, I'm up here. They have that. Vanessa teaches that in her class. So they know about reparations and why I do that is because we gotta teach the kids, right? And adults too in the community of what we're doing. Oth- otherwise it's just gonna be us doing this work. And so we have to inspire them with the work that you all are doing here on this stage. And so that has become my role as my ancestors influence my future, I have to influence their future. And so that's the role that I've taken. And, um, thank you all for the work that you're doing. And so I promise you, they know who Dr. Daniels is, they know Dr. Malvoe, they know, I have to put you in here, but I'm, cause you just did, but they know Cam and they know Robin, cause this is in the curriculum. And the curriculum is always, I'm adding to it and figuring out how we're gonna, um, take it further. And so look out, because, um, I am gonna have a virtual option, I'm working on that. So that way, everybody from around the world in the communities that are suffering like Florida, North Carolina, Arkansas, Texas, um, Georgia, uh, can, can click in and, and, and get these history lessons. And we have a whole school day, like it literally, it start, class starts at nine fifteen and we're over at two forty-five. We have breakfast and lunch. And I even have a chef that actually prepares meals from around the country, like where do you go with the kids? We're gonna have, we have curry chicken and stuff like that, things that they normally don't get to experience. Um, so they're telling a black history through the food as well.
Let's give her a big round of applause for incredible work. Let me also say that one of the things that, that happened during the course of the retreat, uh, someone got up and, and testified because there are, if I'm, I may correct me if I'm wrong, the two remaining survivors. They're each over a hundred years old, almost a hundred and ten years old. And someone said that, I think it was maybe the tour guide who asked, uh, one of them how they felt, particularly around having to go to court or whatever. And they said, I'm tired of doing this. That was very moving because how can we have our ancestors? And you see them, they, you, they roll up on wheelchair, I mean, in wheelchairs or whatever, but they clear in their minds and their commitment and they're, they're fighting, but they said they're tired, which means that if they're tired, we can't be no ways tired. We gotta pick it up, right? So Vanessa Valharper, you got somebody, woo, you got so much energy every time you speak. I mean, I'm ready to run and roll. Vanessa Valharper, talk to us.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Dr. Daniels, for this opportunity and just thank you for everyone that's in this work. Uh, I'm so, um, blessed to have met, uh, Robin, who came to Tulsa, uh, was actually invited to Tulsa, uh, by people that I don't really fool with. But, but, but met her and we knew immediately and made that connection because our hearts were, were, were kindred spirits. And so I'm just so thankful for that opportunity. You saw us in, in the film and I would, and even at that time, I said, look, look at that small room we were in. And then just last year, how many more communities and cities are doing this work? And that's what inspires me, that there's a ground swell. Uh, I am a local elected official. I get asked all the time if I'm gonna run for state office or even, uh, congressional. Oklahoma is the reddest state in this country, um, so that'll never happen, but my heart is for local government. I actually have a degree in government. And so I chose local government for a reason. And that reason is that, in my opinion, uh, local government reaches the people directly. Um, and so that's why I've chosen to do our work. And it is because of so, the, the information, I know Tulsa is Greenwood, right? We, we have that legacy. But when it comes to this work, there are so many other communities that are far ahead of Tulsa. And that speaks to, um, what still exists. And I will say to you, the, the, the spirit that destroyed Greenwood in nineteen twenty-one still exists very strongly in the city of Tulsa. Uh, we are good as a city of trying to hide it, to make it seem like Tulsa is a place that you want to attend and want to come and want to engage. It is not. It is not. It is, it is a struggle every single day. As soon as we try to work forward and, and get something positive done, there's always, there's always an effort to turn and reverse that. It's like what, what they say on, you know, Good Times. But that, that's a reality and it is so strong in the city of Tulsa. So it, it's, it's difficult. And yes, I am the only African American on the city council. We have nine city councillors similar to, to Evanston, but I am the only African American. And they go through great pains to ensure that that, that that is the, the statistic, the data. And that's just a reality, uh, of, of working and, and living in, in Tulsa. But, uh, what, what I will say is we have made some accomplishments. Um, Kristi didn't mention, but she was also one of the founding members of the Greater Tulsa Area African American Affairs Commission. We had to fight for that. One of the first things we fought when I won in twenty sixteen, we had to protest in the summer, in the heat, in the winter, for two years to get the, the creation of this commission. Now, there was a Hispanic commission, the oldest, there was a Native American commission, there was a status of women, all these commissions combined were, had over a hundred years of ex- existence in the infrastructure of Tulsa. We had to fight for ours. The Asian American Commission just started, there was no fight. They popped up and voted on and I was like, what? Oh, okay. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of it, but every time when it comes to us, people of African descent, there is an automatic pushback, and not only at the local level, but in, in government, period. And that's a reality we have to, to speak to. And so, um, but yeah, we had, that was a fight. But the commission, uh, during, as we were approaching the centennial in twenty twenty-one, uh, requested a resolution. Some colleagues of mine, we were also working on the resolution. So we came together, we reached out to experts, we did some research, Google, and learned of Robin Ruth Simmons. Next thing I know, she in Tulsa, I'm like, hey, what's going on? You know, so we made those connections. And, um, and I appreciate her, she came before the council and said, I want you all to know that I support that woman sitting right there on the dais, District One, Vanessa Hall Harper. And I appreciate that. And so we've been in this fight, doing this work, we passed a resolution. Um, I won't go into, I won't go into all of the details of that, but again, it's always a struggle. We have to pack out, pack out, pack out, city councils constantly, it, on any issue that is of significance and will represent progress in our black communities. And so we had to do that. Um, we got the resolution passed. In that resolution was not only apology, but a promise to have community-led conversations as it relates to repair related specifically to the massacre. Um, and the, the reality is, we had already had a Tulsa race riot report done twenty-five years prior. Right? And that was led at the state level. That was a commission done at the, in the, at the state house. And that was by our former, uh, um, uh, Representative Don Ross and, and Senator Maxine Horner. They pushed for that and had a full report done. They even interviewed, uh, at that time, we still had survivors alive. So all of that, that, that narrative and that history was found in that report. We're still doing the same things over and over and over again. And so in this generation, in my time, we led, uh, a community-led conversations called beyond apology. We wanna go beyond just the apology. And so that report was completed about six months ago, uh, and I'm happy to say that, um, as a result of that, that report has been presented to the council, uh, and we're working on presenting it to other local levels of government, the county and, and other institutions. Uh, but I will say that the mayor currently has, we are in discussions, Robin is a part of those as well, cause every time we have a conversation, I want experts there. I'm not an expert. And so, uh, and that's why I'm so thankful for our family, when I call our family and our family reunion, when we go to those me- meetings, that's a family reunion to me. Um, but he is, uh, in agreement with having discussions to start a task force or slash a commission, uh, to discuss repair in the city of Tulsa. We may not call it reparations because I'm telling you Tulsa is the most racist city in this country. But whatever it is, as we've learned from your example, we have to start somewhere. And so we are starting that conversation and pray for us. Pray for us.
All right, Vanessa, what a fighter. Let's give it up, let's give it up, let's give it up, what a fighter. Now, Dr. Julianne Malvoe, you're working on a new book, which lays out the concept of white economic envy as the motive for numerous massacres of black towns and the seizure of black property all across this country. In what ways, uh, is the massacre of nineteen twenty-one and destruction of black Wall Street illustrative of the concept that you're, and you, and you getting ready to bring your new book out and we're waiting for it? But in what ways does it illustrate this concept of white economic envy that you've been talking about? the white economic envy that you've been talking about?
Well, thank you for the question. The working title of the book is Lynching Culture: The Wealth Gap and Reparations. The premise is, it's not just lynching. There are almost 5,000 lynchings. There's a culture of lynching that says that white people can do whatever they want to, to black people, and expect to have no consequences. That's lynching culture. Lynching culture frightened black people into coloring within the line, intimidated black people. Lynching culture is violence and terrorism. And I did a presentation in Tulsa, and I can't find my slide, but I've got a slide called "Don't You Dare." And it's literally about what, as a black person, don't you dare earn more money than a white person? Don't you dare have consensual interracial sex? Which, by the way, only 1/6 of all lynchings were connected to anything that had anything to do with sex. Don't you dare fail to move when a white person is walking down the street. I mean, it literally was, lynching culture is fear. It's frightening. And so there are so many, including Tulsa, there are so many mass, what I call a mass lynchings, the uprising, riots, the massacres. There's so many where the people are afraid to even talk about them. At Rosewood, there's a great book out, White Journalist, but he was interested in Rosewood. He found a brother whose aunt lived next door. We all know the Rosewood story about the lying white woman who claimed she was raped by a black man. She was raped and beaten by her white lover. See, I said she was a scuzzy hussy. But, and then, and then when her neighbors saw her run outside half naked, they ran to her husband's job and said she was raped. And the conclusion was a black man. And basically, they burned down a town because this woman could not keep her legs closed. They burned down a whole town. And then blamed it on us. But, so, anyway, but there's so many others. Wilmington, North Carolina was a wealthy area in North Carolina. White people and black people who worked at a shipyard earned the same amount of money. What did I say? Don't you dare? And so what happened there was when Republicans, they were then the good guys, and black people decided to try to take over government. They took all the wealth, about 60 black men who were very prominent, took them to the train station and shipped them out of town. No notice to their families. And then systematically took their property. There's a film called Wilmington on Fire. You must see it. It is just an amazing depiction of this. Then they went through the tax records and stole people's property. But meanwhile, they burned Wilmington. The number of black businesses went down by like 25%. People just abandoned their businesses. And then some people didn't abandon them. They were taken from them. But people were afraid for the longest time to talk about it. So Tulsa falls right in the line of that. And the thing that's exceptional about Tulsa, even Booker T. Washington, with his, never mind, even Booker T. Washington wrote about how successful Tulsa was. I mean, they had a 750-person theater. You won't find that many neighborhoods here today. 750 persons. The first automobile repair shop in Tulsa was founded by a black man. I learned about Tulsa when I was a kid. Unfortunately, but maybe fortunately for my brain, but not necessarily for me, my grandmother talks about race a lot. She do this, like your old brother would. Wasn't getting ready to start talking about race. She start rubbing on her hand. But, and she would always say, and you know they lie. Pecker Woods lie. They gonna tell you it didn't happen. I mean, she was a trip. I think I take after her. But anyway, I learned about it when I was, so I was always doing little research on race and encyclopedias and stuff like that. Just reading, I would read anything. They said I would read the back of a cereal box. If I had nothing to do, I would. I mean, so, but in any case, having known about it all the time, the economic impact, I'm always kind of stuck with me. What did this mean? These people amassed all this wealth. Now, I was in Tulsa years, years, years ago, before the wonderful weekend, and I was just taking my hat. I had a great time, even though it was too hot. And I tried to walk 5K. And I think I walked three. And about, of course, they later told me I was supposed to eat pasta and don't drink the night before. If you're going on a 5K walk, I didn't know that. Well, I kind of do. I thought the Lord was gonna be with me. And she was until 3K. Then she said, "Fool, you are your own." But one of the things that I noticed that is really so important is the plaques that are on Greenwood Avenue that commemorate the businesses that were gone. And some of them said rebuilt, and some of them said not reopened. White folks could not stand what Tulsa had. And see, I had the privilege of being friends with the old lady, Dr. Olivia Hooker. Y'all remember Dr. Hooker? She died in 2019. I met her when she and I were speaking together. It's a funny story, but I had the cutest little jogging outfit, but I forgot my shoes. And I had matching shoes for my outfit. It was like in 2000. I was very fly then. I'm a little old lady fly now. Still fly, but a little old lady fly. But in any case, so I'm in Dr. Hooker's suite and I'm like, if I don't get some walking shoes, I'm gonna be an evil ass, oop, excuse me, evil you-know-what. And she said, "I don't wanna know any evil you-know-whats. Go in my room and get a pair of shoes." I have two pairs. So she had two pairs of tennis shoes, running shoes. And so she will tell people all the time, I was her soul sister. S.O.L.E., because we shared souls. But she, at 103 when she passed, she would tell you what she remembered about Tulsa. She remembered the white people, her dad owned like the department. Little department store, like a little department store. And he had the only safe in Tulsa, which is how some people became economically whole. It's how they use the money out of his safe to travel around the country to grab, get people in double H B others to help them get back on their feet. But she remembers vividly white, what she said, white trash breaking into their home, going to her mother's closet, breaking her Caruso records. She said Caruso records. I don't even know what Caruso was. That's white economic envy. Black people had too much. And that, and there are so many cases of this. I know Daniels is gonna pull the plug on me in a minute. No, he ain't. But there's so many cases of white economic, they just could not stand for us to have anything. And so when we had it, they chose to respond violently. There's two cases in Paris, Texas. One man was old, he was 60. That was old then. And one was a younger man. They both had parcels of land. White people like, uh-uh. They asked them to sign their land over. Excuse me? They asked them to sign their land over. They said no, so they lynched them. So they simply just lynched them. Anthony Crawford's case is one, that's also my favorite case. But again, Dr. D exhibits the economic envy. Anthony Crawford had what they said was 420 acres of good cotton land. So today, that would be millions and millions of dollars. He had several sons. He was, you know, now, what a white woman said, quoted in one of the newspapers, he was a wealthy Negro and arrogant. So, you know, anytime we have five cents, we're arrogant. The brother went to sell his cotton seed at the general store. A white man was standing in front of him and the store owner offered the white man about five cents a pound more than he offered Mr. Crawford. Mr. Crawford said, "I would rather throw my cotton seed in the dam, no, my damn cotton seed in the river than to be ripped off." Okay? There was a law in Abbeville, South Carolina that you could not, a black person could not curse at a white person. So he didn't curse at the white person. He said, "Damn cotton seed." He cursed at his own cotton seed. But I guess you're not even supposed to use curse words in a sentence with white people. So as he was leaving the store, he was arrested for using profanity. And this is where his arrogance come in. But whenever I tell the story, I have to smile because I'm like, yeah, I liked that brother. He said, "What's the fine?" They said $15. So he reached in his pocket and gave it here. Well, they couldn't take that. So he was lynched and then they let him hang from a telephone pole until his body decomposed. But the worst part of it is this. Then the two, two white men who were his competitors in cotton seed were made the executors of his estate. And his family was given 30 days to leave his land. And there, this replete with these stories. It, white economic envy. I'll give you a contemporary story, which is to have anything lynching to do with. But some of people who are old enough will remember when Bob Johnson, founder of BET, tried to buy US Air. Everybody remember that? And white people in Congress went crazy. I mean, but wild crazy. Are they gonna sell fried chicken on the plane? Are they gonna have watermelon on the plane? I mean, but basically, he made a good faith offer. They turned it down. Again, economic, how did this black man think he could play the same sandbox as us? And there are many, many other stories. But the bottom line is, we, white folks were desperate to keep slave labor conditions, even though emancipation had occurred. Desperate. From 1880 to 19, in 1880, black people had, I don't know, $1 for every $36 white people had. By 1910, it was $1 for every $16 white people had. What does that mean? We closed the wealth gap. We cut the wealth gap in half in just 30 years post enslavement. Today, it's $1 for every $10 white people have. What does that mean? We made more relative progress between 1880 and 1910. Then they passed all these development laws than we did from 1910 until now. White economic envy. And so, you know, anytime we, and it's also about erasure, but I'll get that on the second round. But basically, what we have to understand is that anytime there's forward progress for black people, it will be resisted. And so we have to be prepared. If their old brother said he was tired, then we need to be vigorous for him. Because what we know right now, as opposed to, the first time I wrote about reparations, I think I was in the 11th grade. What we know right now is that then it was like a pipe dream, kind of. This is something that should happen. It was a concept. Now we see it on the horizon. We see the progress.
All right, Dr. Julianne Malvo. All right, to our, to our global audience, you are participating virtually in a national town hall meeting sponsored by the National African American Reparations Commission, also known as NARC, on the state of the reparations movement, featuring a screening of the new, the big payback which you've already seen. So I just want everybody to know what you're doing, what you're involved in. And we thank you so much for participating and being a part of this important conversation with such great folk. Now, to, as we get ready for the audience participation, one of the logistical things is I need to know where we're gonna have the mic for the audience people when they ask the questions. So we just need to find a space for that. We're gonna go to a quick second round. There are a series of questions that come to mind. One of them, and I don't know who wants to take this. Maybe, maybe we'll start with Cam. Because one of the things that we wanna make sure of is that when we are doing reparations, that we're also focusing on self-determination. That is, say, making sure that it's not just some fleeting sort of concept, that we want real repair. And real repair for Africans in America at least is the ability, the capacity to deal with the concept of self-determination. That doesn't get talked about a great deal. Would you share your thoughts about what that means and in terms of how we might manifest that moving forward?
Wow, Dr. Daniels. So my understanding of self-determination is the ability of a people to determine their own future. And for us, that means, how do we develop enough power to do that? Because as of right now, we don't have the power to self-determine. People in the movement think that reparations is simply becoming middle class, simply eradicating the racial wealth gap. There's so much beyond that. As Dr. Malvo stated, you know, every time we make advances, unless we're able to protect that, you know, there's been multiple periods, what I call multiple periods of multi-billion dollar plunder. Not just, you know, during enslavement where billions of dollars of our labor was, trillions of dollars of our labor was plundered. Then we had, you know, hundreds of millions, or tens of millions of acres of land was plundered. And, you know, that continued with the plundering of our businesses. So part of our reparations is acquiring enough power to be able to protect that which we develop, that which we create in a way that we're not subjected to the fear and terror of losing it all again. So self-determination is controlling our own destiny, but also having the power in which to protect that destiny as well.
Right. All right, all right, all right. Just wanted to tease that a little bit. And then, obviously, when we look at what happened in so many of these places, it is that absence of power. And regaining it becomes incredibly important. Robin Ruth Simmons, a couple of questions to you. I want you to maybe circle back on why it is that you continue to circle back on Tulsa. There seems to be something that draws you there. But beyond that, would you just cite a couple of other cities that you think are, I mean, there are plenty of them, but just to let people know that there's some real good stuff happening out there and that nobody knows it better than you?
Can you hear me? There we go. Evanston was the first in 2019, but there's so many others. Incredible work happening in San Francisco. Work is launching in Los Angeles, Detroit, Asheville, North Carolina. Very soon after Evanston passed and established funding, Amherst, Massachusetts, a very small city with like 4% black population, Atlanta, Decatur. There is a long, long list, including the three states that Cam mentioned. So there is a ton of activity. And these convenings that we get together, which Councilwoman Hall Harper called our family reunions, we get together and we strengthen each other. We learn and share from one another. There's no exact model because this work is to be done by the local leaders in that community based on the specific harm there and the remedies that are appropriate for that harm. So there's a lot of, lot of activity. Over 100 initiatives. First Repair hosted 76 of those organizations at our symposium. Please learn more about our symposium at firstrepair.org.
All right, all right. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Can I add something, Dr. Daniels?
Sure.
I mean, the self-determination question, that's where I'm at. And I think you said, "How do I keep circling back to Tulsa?" Because in addition to be a policymaker and a practitioner or whatever you say, first, I'm an entrepreneur and I'm a businesswoman because I have, you know, my children are grown now, but I had a responsibility to my children. And entrepreneurship was the best path for me based on my life circumstances. And so when I think of self-determination, I think about what the people of Greenwood did and what was stripped away and stolen from us. And I think about this place here being an act of self-determination.
Yes, yes.
This actual facility and the businesses here and the networking that's happening. And it's not just the businesses, retail and service businesses. I saw a tax accountant and maybe assurance agent. I saw NAACP here. I saw a mental health workshop happening. It's incredible what's happening here. And so, I know this is, you know, I don't, I'd hope that you don't take this for granted because this is a really, really special place. And I think we're all leaving very, very inspired by it. So, I get back to Tulsa because I have not experienced anything like Greenwood. And when I went there during the twenty-one commemoration event to learn the history and then to see the black community there rebuilding, the resilience that they have, I just believe that everyone should go to Tulsa, go to Greenwood, meet with Christie Williams, so that you could get an official tour of the city and, and, and see the mass graves and also all of the wealth that was stripped away. There are, you know, arguments about how many were murdered by an angry white mob, three hundred people, twelve hundred homes, how much wealth is probably never will be calculated. But you can go to Tulsa and please do look up Christie to learn more about that.
All right, okay, okay, okay. All right, all right, all right. I wanted to raise a question that I just learned about a little bit. And it has to do with the self-determination that is reflected in generations of struggle around something called the red, the black, and the green. And I always say that because I understand there's some, like, stuff is perking up around even Juneteenth in that regard. And, you know, I'm going to start with you, Jan, but, but, but others can jump into it as well. Because this is also around the question of self-determination, I think, as well. And would you just share with us some of the issue that's bubbling up around this question, around particularly Juneteenth? Juneteenth is a good triumph, though I will say this, we were already celebrating Juneteenth. I mean, by kujachalia, we had already declared it a holiday. I mean, it's good to have it to be a federal holiday, but I wonder whether or not they maybe gave Juneteenth up so they didn't want to really give up the real deal in terms of reparations. But that's just me pontificating and thinking about it, and maybe I'm completely off. But while we're celebrating it, I understand there's issues about whether we should do red, black, and green, or red, white, and blue, and I just found that to be a little intricate. You want to take that one on? Oh, okay. Well, let you take that one on. All right. I want you to do two things, is take that on, but I also want you to talk about Kemet. I want you to talk about the, the project that you shared with us the other day. Because in terms of self-determination and what reparations could develop, it seems to me that there's a model that you are working on along with, and I forgive me for not remembering, I'm old, the brother who shared with us and so forth.
Arke Hodges.
Okay, so just do those two things. I see you're ready to, you're ready to jump in on this question of the color. So, do that and then also tell us about the, the project.
Okay, I'll do that. Yesterday, at the Juneteenth Festival, there is a, there was a booth there, it was the ADOS booth. And I think this story was told to me by Brother Jamoke. I don't know if he's still here. Yeah. But anyway, he walked in and he had on red, black, and green, and he said, you're intimidating us. Why won't you come in here with red, black, and green on? What's wrong with you? And he said, well, this is Marcus Garvey's, you know, he said, well, we have red, white, and blue. That's really the Juneteenth. And it's America. We are Americans. We are not Africans.
They colonized. Soon as they colonized, that's what's wrong with them. Anybody who pledges to the red, white, and blue and sold themselves down the river.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, and then we have a lot of young people behind ADOS, and I don't know if anybody sees a part of that, but I certainly don't want my children, my grandchildren to be a part of this movement where they're saying they're not African, they're Americans. But anyway, that's just a side story in terms of the red, black, and green. But the Black Achievement Fund, where we held a dinner with some of the reparations leaders on Thursday, was put together by a brother named Arke Hodges, and I think he got some representatives here. And what he did, he's been working on this since ninety-six, I understand, but it came into fruition about two, three years ago. And what it was is that we're going to raise ten million dollars with our members just donating nine dollars apiece. And it's the Marcus Garvey concept. Because Marcus Garvey, you know, people didn't have a lot, a lot of money back then, but everybody was able to give a dollar, you know? And most people today can put up nine dollars. Not everybody, but a lot of us can put up nine dollars a month. And through that nine dollars a month, in less than thirty-six months, they raised sixty thousand dollars and remodeled the Kemet Club where we had our dinner. And then I went to the red ribbon cutting this past weekend where they had purchased ninety-nine acres of land.
Yay, all right.
Ninety-nine acres of land. And this brother is saying, I believe in reparations, but in the meantime, in the meantime, let's do what we can for ourselves. And so, he's doing it. He's going to build a community there. They got the streets, they're getting ready to lay out. The architects are the same female architects that did a lot of the buildings during the Olympics when it was here in Atlanta back in ninety-six. And so, the brother is making a lot of, a lot of things happen, you know? And they're going to have farms there, A-frame houses. I mean, they got a lot of plans. They got a vision. And I think all of us, if we can donate nine dollars a month, we're going to be a part of this whole movement. In the meantime, is what I'm saying. Now, I was at Tulsa for the hundred-year anniversary, and I had the opportunity to sit with the three survivors at that time. And I have a daughter that lives there now who, who runs a dispensary. So, I'm not sure if you guys are going to use the model that Robin used. I know we said we do different models. But a lot of dispensaries in Tulsa could be, that tax could be used also to set up reparations. And I've been a teacher and a principal for over thirty-five years out of East Palo Alto. I have a lot, and, and we taught our kids about Tulsa back then. This was in the eighties. So, all of my students knew about Tulsa. And when I came out here, my daughter, she's with the brother that's from Tulsa, he knew nothing about Tulsa until four years ago.
I didn't, I was thirty.
Wow.
Wait, we use the microphone. Oh, get a mic.
Yes, I can attest to that because I grew up and matriculated in the Tulsa public school system. My parents still live in the same house I was raised in, just two miles outside of the Greenwood district boundaries, and I didn't know about it until I was thirty.
And I understand that parents...
That's intentional.
Did y'all hear that?
That's intentional by a state school system.
Right.
To ensure that we don't know about our history and our community.
And so, that's why we have to be so careful, y'all, because states are passing laws about history is to be taught.
Oklahoma.
This is called erasure.
That's exactly what it is.
Basically, they do not want us to know what we know or what we need to know. And so, fifteen hundred books, including books written by Alice Walker, by Toni Morrison, have been banned. Fifteen, it might be up to sixteen hundred books now. The role the media has played, as opposed to doing critical reporting, what they're doing is news are lying, just lying. And we can trace that back to Tulsa also.
Exactly.
When Dick Roland got in that elevator with Sarah Page, Dick Roland was a young man, they claimed to rape Sarah Page. He did not. Sarah Page was a young white woman who was an elevator operator. White men observed him bump into her, and he said, he raped, but here's what the newspaper had a headline, "To Lynch a Negro Tonight." And that's what got the white folks all ginned up. Although Dr. Hooker said they were planning something anyway because of all the wealth that we had. But so, that was just an excuse, a, a, a ledge excuse. We have to be fearful of this erasure, which is why Christie's Saturday schools are so important. And remember, we used to do those back in the day.
Yeah, we did.
You know, we did not expect white people to teach black history. This was my grandma, we'd sit at her feet and she'd tell us these stories. And, you know, so, but seriously, folks, that part of the whole notion of reparations is what must there be repair for? If you erase the history, then nobody knows. We were writing an article, you remember that, Dr. D., when we were doing the stuff with ACLU, and they gave me this little white boy, he had to be twenty-two, and had, not that I have anything against twenty-twos. A history major from Harvard who told me he never heard of Tulsa, nor Wilmington, nor the lynching at Memphis that Ida B. Wells wrote about. And I said, dude, let me help you out with something. There's this thing called Wikipedia. I mean, there's this thing called Google. But he said, well, I'm a history major and I never knew about it. And I just had to count to twenty-five to keep from saying something that would have been wildly inappropriate, but right on time. And so, we have to actively fight, actively fight to not be erased. Because that's a conspiracy now, erase black people.
Right. Okay, now, here's what we're going to do. We're going to open it up. I'll just use your last, your last comment, then we're going to go to the audience.
Okay, I just want to tell the sister, I have a lot of information that can help you with your school. We had to re-Africanize all of our books, and we got a lot of information from different places, like in, oh, what, the state up in Portland, Oregon, they have a curriculum there. And then, of course, Jawanza Conde who has, I'll just, that's aside, we'll talk afterwards. Okay? All right.
All right, let's go to our audience out here. We have a, we have a brother right here who, who's working with us. He's got the microphone. What we want to do is, you don't necessarily have to ask the question, you could make a comment, or you can ask the question, or both, but keep it succinct. We want to get as many in as possible in the next like fifteen minutes, if you will. So, who wants to be first? Right here. Who's second? I see second here, number two. I see three, four. Okay, and that, we'll hold it for right there for right now. Well, and five. Yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah, so Nehemiah Frank, also from Tulsa, Black Wall Street, Greenwood descendant as well, went with the survivors to DC. One of the greatest experiences and honors of my life, just being with them there. So, my question is, and I do want to say this really fast to you, thank you so much for what you did. Thank you for staying strong because you inspired us. The centennial was approaching and your name was popping up everywhere in conversations in our community. And so, it's so nice to be able to like be with you, break bread with you, and be in the same space as you today. So, my question is, one is for Councilman Harper, do you think it's possible, like, where is your faith? Because you know where I'm at when it comes to Tulsa and how much faith I have in the systems there, the core systems, all of the systems there. Do you think it's realistic for us to think about the model that, that they passed in Evanston as far as the tax base, being able to support some sort of reparations for us, Greenwood descendants? And then, my other question is pretty much for everyone. As far as the executive order, like, is there movement on actually trying to push the Biden-Harris administration to be able to pass an executive order? And then, the last thing I wanted to also mention was, I am the founder and editor-in-chief of the Black Wall Street Times.
So, let's, let's, let's do that. And then, Cam, if you take the second part of it, and let's, again, let's be as tight as we can, okay?
So, yes, I do think it's possible because one thing we know for sure in this country is that when white folks want to do it, they find a way. Right? You know that with the gathering place. This is a big park in Tulsa. They wanted it, the people with power, influence, money, wanted it, and they can, they can move mountains when they want to. So, is it possible? My answer is yes. How probable and how soon, that is questionable. And so, I will say that I have hope. I have hope. When I no longer have hope, then I will not run for office anymore. But for now, yes, I absolutely have hope. And, and my mantra, and Christie says I shouldn't say this kind of stuff, but sometimes we just have to wait for people to die.
Literally.
Right? And then move on to other generations to get things accomplished. I mean, our work here in this country has been a lifelong journey. And so, even if the administration or the people who are quote-unquote in power today are unwilling to do it, I mean, what's, what's the turkey neck dude in Congress that's about to?
Connell.
Connell, he about to tip over and stuff. See, we just sometimes got to wait for people to die, and then we can move on and get progress done. So, yes, life cycle.
All right, Cam Howard.
So, yes, there is a national campaign to get an executive order. It's called Earn a Black Vote Campaign, and also there's another organization that's predominantly millennials and Gen Z's. It's called Get Free. So, these two organizations, and with the Earn a Black Vote Coalition, it's a coalition of organizations, but collectively, we're pushing the messaging to the president. One, that Democratic Party is totally dependent on the black vote in order to win. They can't win without it. Two, there's about close to three million black voters who are saying, I'm not feeling you, Joe Biden. I might not vote at all, I might vote third party, I might vote with Trump, but I'm not feeling you. Joe Biden cannot win, the Democratic Party cannot win unless he does something to reverse that sentiment among black voters. And so, we're messaging him. We sent about two million ads to twenty-three hundred of his influencers over the last four months, saying, this is what you need to do to reverse the defection of black voters from the Democratic Party. You have, you must sign an executive order for the reparations commission, you must do it now. And we was hoping that he would do it by Juneteenth. He missed a golden opportunity to do that. So, we're still messaging him, still messaging him. Before the Congresswoman got sick, she was supposed to meet with the White House team. Dr. Daniels, myself, were probably, were going to be in those meetings to message to them how important this is for the black community and how important it is for the Democratic Party, and how important it is for America's democracy. Because we're saying that democracy is under peril, and it's going to be the black vote that's going to save democracy. And if you want the black vote to save democracy, you must give us something before the election. So, you can go to earnablackvote.net. We have about seventy-five asset, creative assets, graphics, videos that you can download, and we asking everybody to share them on their social media platforms nationwide, informing the president, informing black people, one, we have to make this demand, collective demand. And, but it's all targeted toward the president that he needs our vote, and in order for him to win, this is what he has to do, and we're not accepting, you know, not that we... That's the only thing we believe is going to reverse the defection of black voters. So, we're not telling anybody not to vote. You know, this, this is what we can demand right now before November.
Let's say it, earn the black vote!
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 And may I add, and Black Wall Street Times founder sitting right here who has that voice, we need our black media to get on the horn, to sound the alarm throughout this nation. You have a voice, a very strong voice, Nehemiah, and you know that. So, we need that media, and we need to use that. We got to use what we have, radio, newspapers, everything.
Just echo that. As a sister messaged me today that NNPA, National Newspaper Publishers Association, is meeting in DC, and they don't have a reparations platform. And NNPA are the black publishers, newspaper publishers around the country, their association.
They're not going to do that, Cam. They're not going to do that.
Well, okay, that's, yeah, that's... I'm just saying that, echoing what Vanessa just said about the power of the black vote. Whether they don't do it, we have black media people like yourself who can do it.
Yeah. All right, let's, let's, oh, let's go to our audience right here.
I promised to be succinct because I wrote down what I wanted to say. My name is Montina Young Fraser, and I've been here in Atlanta since 2011. I'm originally from Steubenville, Ohio.
Steubenville, Ohio?
Steubenville, Ohio.
I'm from Youngstown, but go on.
Okay.
Let's hook up later, sis.
So, I am actually really new to the movement because of ADOS. I heard about, a lot about reparations, so about 2018. I am a direct descendant of Tulsa, Oklahoma, and did not even know until about two years ago, when I mentioned something to my grandmother who's eighty-six and still alive. And her grandfather, her father, Milton Berry, was born in Tulsa, Oklahoma. So, we're descendants of the Berry's, B-E-R-Y, Simon Berry and such.
They owned all the airplanes.
Yes, yes. Second thing is, from an advocacy standpoint here in Atlanta, I focus on the Bs. Business, which forbidding. Boards, which I really think that more of us need to get into local advocacy work in government. We don't understand much about it. Building relationships within the community and then black families. We are really losing because we are not married in building relationships. I have three children, two are married, and then one's engaged to be married, and I'm talking about they're from twenty to twenty-seven and already married. I have a son-in-law that's half Filipino, so I see what happens when we unify. The third thing is, from a messaging standpoint, it just feels like we're, we're, I'm overwhelmed. I come in these rooms, I hear the information, I know what I do. I have clients from two million to twenty-six billion. I was in a room yesterday with West Rock and UPS and Accenture with two-hundred-and-fifty-plus people. I did not realize this was going on today at all, and I think many of us are a little bit confused because the messaging's all over the place. Even when you say, well, ADOS and they're aggressive, I get it, but they are helping us understand. I don't identify as African-American, I identify as a black woman in America. My grandmother's grandmother, who was a hundred and six when she passed, would fight you. She said, I'm colored. That's what I am. So, I think that we just should respect that as a message. But the last thing is, Millionaire Moves was a book written by Dr. William Picard, and in that, he gave us seven specific things to do to take action. And one was building relationships. I would like to hear more about the advocacy work from a political standpoint, which is what started your movement, because I think that's where more of us need to understand and advocate. If you're not building a hundred-million-dollar company, you can build, you can actually manage a hundred-million-dollar budget in your cities. And I'm actually going into politics next year and running for city council in my city. I'm in McDonough, which is Henry County. And then, the last thing with that is just really specifically, how do we best support? I hear the nine dollars a month, but I have grandchildren that I'm funding colleges. I'm funding degrees in education. We have a trust fund set up in my family. So, how do we, as black people in our families, best support this specific movement by taking care of our families? Thank you.
All right, we appreciate that. Let's, let's...
There's a lot there, but I do want to respond to the second B of the three Bs, boards. Boards, committees, and commission, different ways. And we were just actually having this discussion that as incredible as the commission work is, ultimately, it has to be passed by a city council. And once it passes a city council, it can be challenged in the courts. The courts are either elected or appointed or so on, and so, that's back to the work of Reparations United and other, how important exercising our vote is, candidate training, voter education, and so on, because this, if you, especially if you're looking for a legislative move for reparations. And so, I challenge everyone here, no matter what, if you're in Atlanta or one of the suburbs, your municipality has boards, committees, and commissions. And the way these things work is, something is introduced in a committee and then presented to city council. And oftentimes, by the time it gets to city council, the votes are already counted. So, if you are a part of that committee, it could be a committee that's informing the reparations task force or so on. You know, a lot to learn here. I would recommend reaching out to your city council person and asking what boards, committees, and commissions are open. And then the piece about ADOS, I appreciate that, how well organized they were on socials, particularly during the time of COVID. Everybody's glued to their phone, and they did draw, especially younger people, to the movement. And so fortunately, there are many educators and practitioners in the movement for folks to get into this space and find their way and their lane and so on. And so I would just encourage you and everybody else just to learn more broadly about the movement, but that we all have the same goal, and it is repair. It is a legislative action for reparations. It's the check. It's comprehensive reparations. It is all of that, and that we focus more on that outcome instead of the differences that we might have. But thank you for bringing up that boards piece. Very important.
All right, next one, next questioner, I mean, right here, yes.
Brand Rising Family. I'm Her Excellency Chanté Lanay Hurford. I'm founder of the Center for Truth and Healing, also COO of the Hype Magazine, and a royal ambassador for the African Kingdom, where I represent over 750 African kingdoms and chiefdoms. I'm here today, one, as a representative of the Black Achievement Fund. I spent this past weekend camping out there on our 118 acres of land collectively owned by us. And so I invite you all to learn more at baf.solutions, so that you can learn how collectively we are prospering together as a family. Again, I'm also the visionary organizer of an event called Birth of a New Nation, and the event is organized in order to unite and organize the global black diaspora, because I've been a part of so many different movements and organizations, and everybody's operating in silos, like, you know, disconnected dots. And so the Birth of a New Nation is an opportunity for our organizations to come together, to say, this is the solutions we have, this is the solutions that, you know, all the different organizations have, coming together to serve our people. And last but not least, there seems to be this miscommunication that there's only two candidates running for president, when we have another option. We have Dr. Jill Stein, who's running on peace, people, peace, and planet, and she is also for reparations, and she's willing to come in and do sign an executive order. She's on 23 different ballots now. And if we are able to wake our community up, instead of being loyal to the Democratic or the Republican parties and look at other options, I mean, it's insanity for us to keep going and voting for these parties and expecting something different to happen. If we can wake our people up and we can get behind Dr. Jill Stein, who has more of a best interest in the things that are going to help us prosper, then that's who we should put our votes behind. We should at least look at her as a serious option and not depend on the Democratic or the Republican Party to give us reparations. That's what my final say.
All right, okay.
Voting is not the most we can do, it's the least we can do. So the most important thing that people should do, leave it up out of here, is committing themselves to vote. But sister, with all due respect, you need to look very carefully at Jill Stein. I was on a platform with her in 2020. She is in favor of reparations, but she hasn't detailed it out, and she's also in favor of a whole lot of wacky stuff that I don't think would well serve our community. We should not be wed to the Democratic and Republican Parties, but in the very short run, we should all be wed to getting that, keeping that orange man out of the White House. I would like everybody to, I want you to Google Project 2025. It is a 900-page Republican plan for what they would do if that man is elected. A 900-page plan, a part on labor. My training is that I'm a labor economist. It begins with, we are a Judeo-Christian nation that believes in the value of work. You know where they go from there, coupling Medicaid with mandatory work. That's Project 20. And they would decimate the civil service. You know, disproportionate number of us, black folks, but especially black women, work for the federal government. I don't tell people how to vote. I assume that everybody that I know has good sense, but most people who have good sense do not want the orange man in there to decimate our society, to take away DEI, to pass legislation that prevents black people from giving other black people money. I mean, these folks have, and they're within that of getting what they want. And you know, I think about that song, "If you think you lonely now, wait until tonight, baby."
You're thinking lonely now.
If I'm getting there, you're going to be loving by me.
I love the blues.
Just saying.
All right, okay, so here's what we're going to do. Take one, two, and I said two more, we'll take them together, we'll take the questions together, and then we'll answer in composite as the panel gets their last comments in. So take them, there's one, two, and there were two more, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, guys. Okay.
It could be a question or a comment, I'm sorry.
This is a really quick question for Robin Ruth Simmons. I was just wondering, with your housing reparation that you came up with, how did you determine that that would be the initial reparation plan? Like, did you poll the citizens of Epstein?
Yeah, so we do...
No, 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 Robin, hold on. Let's get all the questions in, and then let's go from there. You'll get that question, you'll answer that one.
And that's it, that's my question.
Okay, and there are two more questions, I think. There were two more people, I think, over in this... Okay. Well, there was, it was on the other side, there was someone, they were on this side here, so it's an honor system, so now, if you weren't in line, I mean...
You moved, you moved.
Okay, all right. Go right ahead.
Hello, there, Dr. Ron Daniels and Ms. Julianne Mavro. Good to see y'all in the flesh.
All right.
Odéjou, like the city in France. I've been tuning in to IBW on Mondays at 3 o'clock every day.
All right, brother, appreciate that.
When I get off work, I got it right there on my phone. I'm listening to you. To the sisters on the Tulsa massacre panel, thank y'all, I appreciate you listening in and actually being right here, having a seat at the table, that mean a lot.
All right, thank you so much. All right, all right. That's right, I do have a little piece of radio program called Bandage Point, every Monday, WBAI 99.5 FM on the Pacifica Network. All right, every Monday. Last one.
He has to hold the mic. I am from unincorporated DeKalb. I just wanted to say that, in Decatur, and wanted to speak to you, I hope, by the end of this event. But I wanted to speak to education and the comprehensive notion of reparations that you brought up, because I think what we tend to do is, we are here focusing on reparations from this economic perspective, but I think Dr. Malvo brought up the notion that we've allowed ourselves to sit quietly and let public education go down the tubes. The banned book movement that has taken place has really begun to tell us about erasure and how we can, our young people can really be dismissive of the history because they're not being taught it, they're not being given that opportunity. In our Atlanta Alumni Chapter, we did offer a banned book forum in last year, in an effort to educate parents to what it means when you take away the literature and the history of children in school and call that curriculum change. And it's coming from governors, and it's coming from legislatures, the same way as legislators. So excuse me, I'm going to say this because I'm talking and it ain't y'all talking, but the old white men who decide what we learn and what we care about. And so I would just hope we will continue to think about the grassroots effort you're doing in education ought to be replicated as well. That's why I want to talk to you at the end of this, because I remember the Freedom Schools, and I remember what they did back in the day. So thank you.
Right, all right. Okay, thank you much. So here's what we're going to do. Robin, you answer the question, and everyone, we're going to go in a minute, okay? And for your last comment or observation, but Robin, you go first in terms of answering the question that was put to you.
The question regarding how did we land on housing, the first practice of reparations is the higher community informing. And so through a community process, the community, the black community prioritized housing first. There was a long list, dozens of recommendations, but housing had the most support, and so that was our first step. Our legislation includes housing, economic development, and educational initiatives within our purview. You have to remember that you can only legislate what's within your purview. So we also stand on the demand for HR40, as well as state and county work and institutional work as well. And so in closing, my remarks are, please join the Movement for Reparations if you haven't already. There are localities in your, all across Georgia, Decatur, all these different places. I've been to South Fulton, Georgia, lots of activity happening here. Please join. There are many ways to do so. I would recommend that you follow everyone on this stage, on socials, and follow our organizations as well. I must, in full disclosure, in answering the question about the differences in the reparations movement as a Pan-Africanist, it is important to me that we all win together, but I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Robin, 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 please, no, no, Robin, how do people get in touch with you?
Oh. I'm on all the socials as Robin Ruth Simmons and FirstRepair.org. You can register for updates there. We also have a monthly reparations strategy session that is open to everyone. It's on Zoom. You all are welcome. We break down into regional groups. Our regional leader for the South is here, Brother Jimoke. If you could stand up so everybody could see you, you could see him afterwards. And Jimoke leads our South region for the reparations movement, and I hope to see y'all soon.
All right. So everybody, give your contact information when you conclude, please.
Okay, I just want to say, we have to unite some kind of way, and we need to attract the communities across the country about why we need to unite around reparations and working toward reparations and some of the things they do with the Black Achievement Fund. Also, before you all leave, there's a sign-up sheet in the back, I mean, outside, to sign up for the reparations chapter here in Atlanta and also in Decatur. So please sign up, and we've got to unite, y'all. There's only way, whether it's ADOS or work, because we not going to get anywhere if we don't.
All right.
So you can go to earnablackvote.net. Again, there's a tab that says messaging, and click on those messages, click on that tab. There's four series of messaging. The primary message that I want to relay is that we have the power right now.
Right.
We have the power to make something happen before November. We're not, this campaign is not about who wins after November. It's about who controls the power now to do something now, and that's President Biden. He can do this executive order commission tomorrow, but he has to be convinced that it's in his best interest, and the best interest of the Democratic Party. And again, we're messaging him, we're messaging his influencers, but it has to be a come from the ground, from you. And the way that that happens is through social media, or through calling, or through writing to the president. We have to message to him that this is his only way to victory. The Democratic, blacks are 20% of the Democratic Party base. All other people of color are 19%. They cannot win unless they get 80% or more of the black vote, and he doesn't have that right now. And this is an opportune time to make the demand, because he doesn't have it at this particular point. And that puts him in a vulnerable position and puts us in a powerful position. We have the power to make the demand. Go to earnablackvote.net. Mention Brother Jimoke. Brother Jimoke is our Georgia, Earn a Black Vote, Georgia, team builder, team leader. He'll have information, he has information at the table outside. Also, last thing, we have a postcard campaign, and there's some postcards outside that are directed to the president to say, you're totally dependent on the black vote in order for you to win, we must win together. Simple postcard, just put your zip code on it and mail it in. Or you can go to Earn a Black Vote and order from us anywhere from 100 to 2,000 postcards, and we'll send them to you, so you can send them to your organization, your church, et cetera. So this message is coming from all around the country. Thank you.
All right, Jam.
I just want to encourage folks to continue to think about reparations comprehensively. And there was a lot of discussion about self-determination and erasure, like the sister brought up. And what's currently happening is, because one of the biggest vestiges of chattel slavery, one of the first harms was the attack on our peoplehood.
Right.
When they took our ancestors during the transatlantic slave trade and brought them to the Americas, one of the essential harms, which is part of genocide, was the erasure of their various ethnicities and cultures. And we're still fighting that same battle. And so for me, when we talk about comprehensive reparations and all the different things that need to be solved, we are often not drawing upon our greatest resource in terms of self-determination, which is going back, Sankofa, and embracing the cultures, ethnicities, heritages of our ancestors, who were Africans, whether or not we identify as that now or not. We are descendants of Africans from Western and Central Africa, and they had their own languages, their own religions, their own cultures, their own beliefs. That's the reason why we alive today.
That's right.
Because they utilize all of those different things in order to survive.
Absolutely.
So we got to continue to do that. Sankofa, Sankofa, Sankofa.
Sankofa, Sankofa, Sankofa! Yes, Christie.
One of the questions that you asked, and I didn't even answer that, and someone asked out here, is, how can you help?
That's right.
And so I will say, please look up Black History Saturdays. You can just Google Black History Saturdays, it will pop up. There's a donation link. Please consider giving to Black History Saturdays. Also, what we are doing is, when organizations get together and make a donation, I am naming classrooms after those organizations, because it's really important that our kids see the people who are doing the work in those organizations and to remember their names, so they won't say, I'm in classroom number two. They can say, I'm in classroom NARC, First Repair, you know, things like that, because that's how we get our kids to learn. And then I'll say this in closing, I was listening to Dr. Daniel Black from Clark, yes, and one of the things he said was, he said, in 18 through 1890, I'm not, 1860 to 1890, is when a lot of the HBCUs were created, and they were created by ex-slaves, who, some who didn't know how to read, who barely knew how to read, and some who just learned how to read. So if they can create that, what are we doing?
Come on with it.
What are we doing?
Come on with it.
So I need your support. There is no reason why your children or yourself should not be learning black history. There is something magical that happens to you when you learn that your history didn't begin at slavery. When you know that you are products of African kings and queens, it changes who you are. It gives you a confidence, it anchors you with self-value, and so that is so important. And so I just want to leave you with that, and if you don't have children, you know children. Make sure that they are learning black history. You can contact me if you wanted to learn my model and create those in your communities. And so I just want to leave you with that, and thank you so much.
Contact information.
Oh, just, if you go, if you Google Black History Saturdays, we will pop up, and you will find everything there, I promise you. We have a Facebook page, we have a website. Just Google Black History Saturdays.
All right, Vanessa.
I just want to say, unapologetic. We have to be unapologetic about the things that we're doing.
That's right.
And I'm in too many spaces where that's not the case. And I tell my brothers and sisters who are not, it's not time for you to be in this space, but you need to be unapologetic about who we are and what our missions are. My favorite quote is, you don't make progress by standing on the sidelines, whimpering and complaining. You make progress by implementing ideas. And that is what I think every one of us up here and in our communities are doing. And that's a quote by Shirley Chisholm, who happens to be a Delta, but she's still, she's still my, she's, look, she got picked the microphone. She is still my shero. But at any rate, I'm so glad to hear you said that you were considering running for city council. We have to get into these spaces and run for office. These are powers, seats of power and position, and we don't think, oh, well, I can't do it, or I don't have the education, or I don't have the name, or whatever. Get in there and give the people a name to vote for, a person. They're voting for you and who you are, not necessarily education. It's good if you do have an education. I am the, of nine, I'm the only one that have a degree in government, right? Everyone else have other professions. And so you can still serve in your communities in elected seats without having a master's in government or anything else like that. So please, don't, consider that work, and don't just discount your experience, because it's about your heart. All of this is a heart work. It doesn't have, it's very little to do with the rest. I'm not an expert in reparations. I go to the people who are experts in reparations, right? And so be faithful enough and unapologetic enough to say, you know what, I don't know what I'm doing, but I know there, I got brothers and sisters in this community or in this nation that I can reach out and ask for help. So please do that, and congratulations for deciding to throw your hat in the ring for elected office. We'd be praying for you, because you're going to need it.
Contact information, contact information.
Oh, just Google Vanessa Hall Harper in Tulsa and all of that'll come up. I can give you my cell number after this, I share my information willingly, so.
All right, Dr. Jam.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for being here. Y'all have been patient and open and I'm grateful for the questions that people have raised. I want, you know, I have an economist, but I'm first an educator. And so I want folks to understand that your responsibility is to learn. I went to Tanzania in 1974, it was the first time I put my foot on African soil. I was privileged to go to the Sixth Pan-African Congress. And it was amazing, I was 20. And one of the, I was an arrogant little thing, so I said, I
Really?
Dennis, I went over there saying, I think I will, I had gotten into grad school and I said, I think I'll go over there and teach history. Now, I was an econ major, I mean, I read everything. So I met the Minister of Education coincidentally, and he looked me at that, he said, what kind of education do you have? I said, I have a BA in economics in Boston College. He said, that's all? I saw I'm getting my master, I actually got my masters at the same time, but they didn't give it to me until two weeks later. I'm trying to tell him this, and he said, you are a Western woman who has been educated by colonial whites. Why would we let you teach in our schools? Put me back up in my place. And I did, I actually cried, I was mad, I was like, that man talked ugly to me. And I didn't even talk ugly back, that's what I was crying about. But, but he was the Minister of Education. But, but the bottom line is, after I thought about that, I thought, Malcolm said something, he said, why would you let the colonizers teach your children? And so when we send our children to public schools, I believe in public schools because they're an equalizer. But I don't believe in them in the ways that they have configured themselves now. I wish that, the sister who said she wants to go to city council, what do y'all, what do y'all need to go to? Run for education boards. This is where this stuff is being fought at the granular level. What's, what, and frankly, half of those melanin deficient people on school boards are also educationally deficient. Do not doubt, my grandmother would say, I can go record exactly the high parts from a hole in the wall. So we need to retake the education system, but then we also need to supplement it. With back in the seventies, Dennis, remember, we had Saturday schools, reading groups. We were going through the Marx, we were going through all the stuff that they didn't teach us. Why would, you know, like Audre Lorde, the master's tools will not dismantle the master's house. Why would you expect those people who want us ignorant to teach us anything else? And so when we talk about reparations, part of the ignorance around reparations is not about ignorance on reparations, it's just ignorance, it's just general ignorance. Ignorance, I'm not gonna call ADO South, oh, I just did, but about the ignorance about the transatlantic slave. Somebody got off the boat before somebody else, but they were all on the same boat. That's literally what happened. And so there's an ignorance, we have a responsibility to educate ourselves and those around us. Number two, we have a responsibility to take the reparations issue with us wherever we are.
Right.
My soror, I hope she's still here, Dr. Sheila Fleming, basically had Delta Sigma Theta, our amazing sorority, take up the reparations.
AKA gonna join it, they gonna get off into it too.
We were the first
The alphas too, the omegas gonna get into it too.
That's a horrible sound, y'all, ooh. But in any case, as usual, y'all have to follow our leadership. We were the first of the Divine Nine, and we hope that all of the Divine Nine, we hope that all of the Divine Nine will join us in doing reparations, basically.
Together, right.
And then I have one last.
Quickly.
Yes, sir, quickly, quickly, you always telling me quickly, I gotta talk slow.
I'm letting you, I'm letting you be the closer.
Okay, and then finally, around comprehensive reparations, like I said, take the issue with you. Not only, you know, to your sorority fraternity, take it everywhere with you because there's so many people who don't know. Go to NARC, IBW21.org, learn the 10-point plan. Because the last part, reparations is not just about money. When you start talking to white folks about black folks getting money, they get real nervous. Everybody wants a check, well, y'all want a check, but the check is not the only thing. We want our institutions repaired. We want to, we want our education repaired.
Right.
We want our health repaired.
Right.
Richard Wright, there's a lynching in Mississippi, I can feel it in Chicago. Every time these devils kill one of our young people, we can feel it all over the country. We are traumatized people.
Right.
And so learn the 10-point plan and talk about it.
Right.
Talk about it, I will stop there, thank you.
Amen, all right. Your contact information.
I sure didn't give it, NBCIT.org. You can go there, it's the National Black Cultural Information Trust, there's links to our various programs.
Let's give this panel a big round of applause. Oh my God, how wonderful, how wonderful. Now, I am going to, we were at the Kimmit Lounge and I talked about us lifting us and talked about them, and I belong to them. So I am going, I'm gonna get my nine, what is it, nine ninety-nine? I'm throwing my nine dollars, I won't be in it, I won't be a part of that, right? And I know Cam got excited too, he heard about it because we, we, I want to see these things materialize. Let's give the owners, the host here at the Pink Lion, Ni Badie, a big round of applause. Brother Gordon is not here, let's give them a big round of applause. This has been wonderful, Derek Bozeman was not able to come, but Derek Bozeman is a bad brother. Derek Bozeman always, no, he's not here, I guess, but he always helps out. And so even if he's not here, let's give Derek Bozeman a big, and WAOK, a big round of applause. And as Dr. Jay said, go to the Institute of the Black World 21st Century and/or NARC has the most extensive online reparations resource center in the world, literally. And by the way, it's put together by someone who was the Press Secretary for Maurice Bishop of the People's Revolutionary Government of Grenada, Don Rojas. A true revolutionary has put that together. So go to IBW21.org or reparationscom.org, either one, but IBW21.org is either for me. And not only go to the reparations resource center, but sign up. And as, and also outside, there will be a sign up sheet, sign up the sign up sheet if you so desire so we can also be in touch with you as well. So let's give yourself another big round of applause, another big round of applause. Why don't we do some Harambe's up in here? Okay, we're gonna do some Harambe, we're on the same page, let's do Harambe, all right.
All right, everybody, please stand. For the fruition of black power, for the power of our nation, to the building of a better people, we pledge to think black, think African, think, I don't know why I can't do this today, I do it every day. For the fruition of African power, for the triumph of African nationhood, we pledge to our nation to build a better world for our people. We pledge to think African, speak African, pray African, love African, buy African and be African because we are African. We'll do African things today to ensure as of the United African States tomorrow. On account of tattoo, let's all do Harambe's, Moja and Billy tattoo. Harambe, 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 Harambe. And come to the Collagreen Cultural Festival, September 28th, Collagreen Cultural Festival. We be talking about reparations there as well, thank you.
And support the new black Wall Street. Robin Ruth Simmons gave a great commercial for the new black Wall Street.